Twenty twenty-three, I'm Carrie Martin, Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few announcements to read. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations in the meeting. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public's access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will not feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Frentz, evening.
Here.
Bill Pierce?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
And Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Laurie Connors?
Here, and Bob Fredrico is waiting in the audience.
And anyone for minutes tonight?
She's gonna be watching in on Thursday, so she's not here.
Okay. Bobby? Hey, Bob should be in, so. Bob, would you like to confirm that you're here and can hear us?
I sh- I. Well, I sure would. Good evening, everybody.
All right, hello. Okay, for tonight, ground rules for presenters or applicants on the agenda. The Chair will invite each speaker applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation to speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to meet their phone or computer while not speaking and speak clearly to help generate accurate minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board of Committee will be conducted by what we'll call Vote. There's no public comment tonight or executive session tonight, so that concludes our announcements. First, on our agenda this evening, we have the preliminary discussion with Ken Bishop of Union Studio regarding development concept for the properties at Zero Hudson Street, fifty-six Hudson Street, and a point-three-four acre parcel abutting River Street and the Assabet River. So, for that one, it looks like I would be bringing in Ken.
I'm sorry, I just noticed there is a typo on the agenda. It's a thirteen acre, thirteen-point-four acre parcel, not a point-three-four acre parcel.
Okay, great. I'm gonna bring in Ken Bishop. And then Ken, is it, do we know who else is on, oh, Ken, who else is on your team?
Greg Lattell, Jeremy Lake, and Tom Riordan.
Okay. And. Okay, great, so Ken, is this your full team tonight? Is this everyone you anticipated?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay, great. So, why, would you like to make a presentation? Do you wanna, do we have something, do you have something to share on screen or anything like that?
Actually, Jeremy Lake from Union will be making the presentation along with Greg Little, so I'm gonna hand it over to them if you don't mind.
Sure, sounds great. If you guys want to share your screen, that would be great.
All right, you ready for us to jump in, or?
Sure, please do.
Ken or Tom, do you guys want to provide any introductory comments, or do you want me to just talk about it?
Sure, Madam Chair, that's all right.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Okay, Tom Riordan, I'm a consulting architect for NB Realty Trust, and our interest in this presentation is to see if we can be considered as an extension of Scenario Two, which is the downtown extension that was developed for the Implementation Committee, which is the Harvey property along Main Street. And the parcel we're going to discuss tonight abuts that property to the north, along Cold Harbor Rock and the Assabet River. And we believe this would be an appropriate use of this property along Hudson Street and would further improve the amenities that were presented by Watson and Sampson as Scenario Two. So, with that, I will turn it over to Jeremy of Union Studio. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. So Greg, can you go ahead and flip to the next page? So as Tom mentioned, really, we were, Union Studio, we're a Providence-based architecture and community design firm. Ken Bishop, who owns these parcels, reached out to us and just asked us to put together just some preliminary, a preliminary loading study to give everybody a sense of what the potential for this parcel might be and how it might look if it was, it was considered or incorporated. As Tom mentioned, what we're showing here is Northborough, the downtown area. The orange dash circle is a five-minute walk or a quarter-mile radius from the center of town. That's kind of shorthand that we often use for, if you're there, you're really in part of the core, you know, you're really close to being, you're very proximate to the to the downtown area or the central area here. And as Tom referenced, the blue is the Harvey property, which I know is a parcel you guys have been talking about and looking at in the past. And really, what Ken asks us to look at are the parcels that are in the red that are owned by NB Realty Property, that includes the current home of the Maytech Instruments facility and a bunch of empty land currently. That's the larger portion of that there to the north. So again, just to give you a sense of where it is and the scale of that parcel relative to some of the other things you've been talking about, we want to just kind of include this context map. Greg, if you can go to the next slide. So this is the larger portion that's essentially north of Hudson Street. There's also a small, smaller couple of parcels that are just south of Hudson Street that we'll also be showing you. But really, I just wanted to sort of share with you some of the existing conditions, then I'll have Greg kind of walk you through the scheme that we came up with. But there's quite a bit of topography on the site. So if you, I know it's probably hard to make out, but the contours here at the low end on the left-hand side, you're around about two-hundred-and-sixty as an elevation, and the high point is right about where it pinches on the right-hand side, which is sort of the tail end of it. You get up to as high as three-hundred-and-sixty, so there's as much as a hundred feet of grade change across this parcel. So there are certainly areas here that would be very difficult to develop. And so really, what we did was try to look at the area that we thought was most reasonable, most feasible, which is really only a portion of the site, which is there on the left-hand side. You can see where the lines are a little bit further apart, it's a little bit flatter. Right as you come in off of Hudson Street in the lower left-hand corner, there's sort of that tail that kind of goes up into there. There's about twenty feet of grade change in there, so there still is grade to contend with. But we felt like that little pocket in there was probably the likely feasible area to build without getting pretty heroic about site regrading to try to capture more area. So with that, I'm gonna pass it to Greg to kind of walk you guys through the initial study we came up with.
So this is our concept plan. You can kind of see down here along Hudson Street. We wanted to kind of keep the character along Hudson, especially with the neighboring properties of just showing, they're called nine-unit multiplexes. About two and a half stories, they blend in well with the look of kind of a large, single-family home. And so that kind of holds our street edge along Hudson. As you come back in, there's, you know, the parking access on both sides, but then you'll kind of catch a deflected view of another one of these multiplexes along with the idea of some trail access. So we're essentially just using anything that's on the leveler side of the property for these kind of multiplexes. And as you come up, we're just, essentially, we're providing about just under a mile or a quarter-mile of three-quarters of a mile of hiking trails up along the hills. Just some way to, you know, amenitize some of that property and open that up. And then as you come back in, you will have ten more of these multiplexes that take you back to a close. Close is essentially a cul-de-sac, just with a little bit of open space, a nicer way to have a turnaround at the back of the site. You'll see that these ten-unit multiplexes are tuck unders, so we're gonna utilize some of the grade and park underneath the backside of the building, providing some covered parking for these units as well. And there's additional surface parking in the back. And so this gets us around ninety-seven units. We have about a hundred-and-eighty-eight spaces, just about six over where we needed to be, at one-point-nine spaces a unit. It's also, you know, considering the whole site, this thirteen-point-one acres, we're at seven-point-four-twelve units an acre. And if you just incorporate these area of the site that we're actually utilizing, we're only using about three-point-six acres, which comes in around twenty-seven units an acre.
So again, yeah, so again, we were, Ken basically just asked us to look at, you know, if we were gonna provide housing here, you know, what would make the most sense or what might be a reasonable strategy? And so we thought these sort of small-scale multifamily buildings that are really, like Greg was describing, and we'll show you an image of one of the ones we've done elsewhere. You know, at the scale of a large house, I mean, it's a little bit bigger than a house, but it's really meant to still be something that would plug into a community or an area that might largely be single-family in nature currently. There is an existing, the house that's just to the right of the two, right on Hudson Street, that structure is actually a small, five-unit building, so this is kind of a similar scenario to what those are. And when we, again, just tried to deploy those in the areas that made the most sense, we came up with about a hundred units for that portion of the site. And I know the MBTA communities, you know, imagines as much as fifteen units to the acre, as Greg mentioned. Our overall, you know, blended density, if you consider the whole site, is about half that. So it is conceivable you could try to get as many as two-hundred units on the site at fifteen units to the acre. But to do so would probably require going to more of a traditional, larger format, you know, multifamily corridor-type building. So again, this was just just an exercise, try to get everybody a sense of what might be feasible or possible on the site and how it might help contribute towards the MBTA objectives that you guys are currently considering. So Greg, do you want to go ahead and show them the other portion?
So we took a look at, just across Hudson Street, along the intersection where River and Hudson intersect. And we took a look at where the Maytech Building is, the original brick building that's still standing. And then the, we're calling them the Assabet River Parcels on the other side, these two empty pieces of land where there's a little bit of parking currently for Maytech on that side of the street. Since we're utilizing a lot of their parking lot across Hudson Street, we needed to kind of compensate for that. And so we just came up with a thirty-nine-unit parking lot on the side, but the idea here was to really allow an opportunity to expand the Riverwalk down the Assabet River and provide a small kind of parklet area, just something where, you know, a small space to gather, just enjoy the river, and then potentially another kayak launch to actually access the river with kayaks and canoes and the like. And then also, the idea over here was to reuse the brick Maytech Building potentially as some sort of commercial use and just creating some additional parking back there that serves as convenience parking.
So the primary operations of Maytech would still continue in the stuff on the left, and we're even sort of hinting in there, maybe a potential addition or change over there as well. But really, it's how they, you could potentially repurpose a portion of the site for some other future commercial use that could even be residential potentially. But really, the idea here was to show how even some of the concepts that were shown on the Harvey property of creating this amenity of a Riverwalk along the Assabet could continue into the site, create a little public moment there at the intersection with River Street, but also address some of the needs like parking that would still need to be compensated for here. So, so again, this is just a preliminary study to give you guys a sense of what's going on. We're not, you know, submitting and looking for an approval for the scheme or anything along those lines. It really was meant to just be an illustrative exercise to help in your conversations relative to these parcels and the MBTA effort. So that's really all we've got. Happy to sort of take any questions you guys might have or.
Oh, did you have a visual for what the multiplex looks like at another location?
Yep, you're right. Sorry, one more page, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, so this is the last page. Down here in the center is the nine-unit multiplex, which is what we imagine being along Hudson Street along with the neighboring five-unit multiplex that kind of just shows how this character could, you know, continue down the street and just match what's already there. And then at the top, just kind of ideas for the riverside parklet and kayak launch and the turnaround at the back that provides a little bit of open space instead of just a standard cul-de-sac.
Okay, thanks for showing that. Questions from the board? Amy?
Hi, thanks for that. A couple of questions I had, would this be rental or are these gonna be condos that you're gonna be selling?
I don't think that's been determined. I know, can you want to address that?
Yeah, no, you kind of took the words out of my mouth. You know, it, we really even haven't gone as far as even talk about development costs and whether or not this approach would even be feasible. With that ninety-seven unit number, you really have to kind of look at what your fixed costs are. And then just, with, you know, the cost of development being what it is these days, it's really hard to say whether or not this would even be a doable project as it's, you know, as it sits. That's kind of the next step to try to put a little effort into that exercise. But as far as rental or sell off as a condo, I don't think we really have thought that far.
Okay. I was curious, because sometimes they say, oh, we have the maintenance on site, and I guess that would only be for rental. I was just curious. Would you be willing to do some of the affordable housing? We have to keep our stock ten percent over affordable housing for the MBTA community. You know, we like to ask like fifteen percent.
Again, that's a tough question to answer at this time, Amy. It really is unclear in terms of how this would all play out and, you know, what these units would actually cost to develop and what that would translate in terms of rental or sale price. I think personally, my preference would be to keep them as rental units. And then that adds, you know, kind of another element to what the cost of building in certain amenities to be competitive with, you know, other, you know, similar facilities in the area, whether it be on the other side of Northborough or in Berlin, you know, things like clubhouse and other sort of facilities, that would be expected.
Laurie, did you have a question too?
Well, I just wanted to say that the draft bylaw would mandate a minimum of ten percent of the units to be affordable housing. So if you're not interested in doing affordable housing, then that would be a problem.
No, I didn't say that. I just said that we don't really have enough information to really determine that. If that's part of the terms and conditions, then that's fine.
Okay. Looks like a couple more questions here. Millie, question from you?
Yeah, just curious, would this be done in phases if you were to proceed with this? Or would this be looked to be done all at once?
And I don't know, I think, again, these are tough questions to answer at this phase. I think from a financial perspective, I think doing it all at once wouldn't be a problem. I think we certainly have the means to pursue this project. Just be a matter of how sensible it would be to do it in phases opposed to build it all at once.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna add to that, that it is one of the advantages of this approach of doing these smaller incremental buildings, is it gives you that option. You know, if you were doing one large structure, it's an all-at-once kind of financing situation, whereas this would let you potentially phase in the construction or the financing or whatever, you know, so it builds on a little more flexibility.
Thank you. Bill, you have something as well?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions about the the trail that you're mentioning here, as well as the parking and the kayak access. I think those are great ideas. Is the intent that that land would be given over to the Trails Committee to maintain the trail? Or what's your thought on the maintenance of that trail? And the parking and kayak access, right? Would those be given to the town to manage, or would you still be managing that?
I'm open for that. I don't think we have any preconceived plan, one way or the other. I think, you know, your point's well taken regarding maintenance of the trails. If the facility would really be in a position to do that and yet still open it up to the public, I think it probably would make sense to to hand that over if they were interested in it. As far as the kayak launch area, again, I think where that would become shared parking, I'd have to just see what the pluses and minuses of doing it either way would be, Bill, to be honest with you.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
I mean, just as simple as, who would plow that? Is that, you guys would plow that parking lot, or?
Yeah, I think we would, yeah. I think we would have to. Again, this would be maintained for the for the manufacturing facility unless we made some other arrangements with some other potential locations on Hudson Street that would be more convenient. But yeah, I think, I think that would be certainly our responsibility if it continues to be parking for Maytech.
Right, and then I was thinking like the path as well, and like I said, the kayak launch, so. You know, you're right, it's things that need to be discussed further later if there's an official.
I mean, they're great questions. They get you thinking that, you know, about things that you hadn't thought before. But, you know, I mean, Maytech's been in town for over twenty-five years, you know, we love where we're at. And we want to be a good neighbor, so I think this would be a good project to make use of that land. And I think we'd be more than pleased to maintain the Riverwalk as part of it.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions, staff, Laurie, or Bob?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I have the same, Bill, I have the same question you did about maintenance and the trails and whatnot, so I think that was it for me. And I see you had the breakdown of one bedroom versus two versus three, so. I see that there, so that's great to see. So otherwise, I don't have any other questions.
Just a quick question, Madam Chair.
Oh, sure, sorry, Anthony, I didn't see that.
Right. Yeah, so I'm just like, the things that kind of jump out at me right away is the intersection there, so opposing River Street. And so that, and Hudson Street can get a little dicey with traffic and just, you know, traffic speed. And then if you're gonna have pedestrian traffic, that, I mean, we have to have some sort of mitigation there in terms of just protecting people. Curious, in terms of that brick building, any thoughts on what you might want to do with that besides just commercial something? No, not really. I mean, I think it, when we got the addition up, it becomes, it becomes extra space for us. So it's just a matter of what we could do with it, whether it be small offices, professional offices, or maybe art galleries or a restaurant or something like that. I think we'd be open to any idea that we could come up with. Yep.
What's that zoned over there? How's that zoned? Is it already commercial?
Downtown business. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, neighborhood, downtown neighborhood.
But if it went into the MBTA, it could be opened up into the mixed use, where it could have businesses down underneath and apartments on top. And that would allow some businesses in the downtown neighborhood, right? If we included that mixed use, that building.
Absolutely. Under the option two, the mixed use would be allowed and encouraged on the first floor of buildings, so.
So I'm just looking at the the table of uses. Okay. Okay, great. Anything else?
I mean, to Anthony's question about, you know, that intersection there, is there the opportunity for any, like, sidewalk or, I mean, obviously, I'm trying to picture that area.
That, that's one of the motivating things that we have. I mean, to get the parking moved opposite River Street, which is a little bit safer for my employees. We have had situations where I've had several employees hit, you know, crossing Hudson Street to get access to the existing parking lot. So this is kind of a benefit for us to, you know, to prevent having to cross Hudson Street. But, you know, obviously, whatever, I think there was some talk about, you know, developing access to the downtown area. So improvements to whatever sidewalks or whatnot would certainly be sensible.
Okay, great. All right, if no further questions, I think that's it, unless there's anything else from you guys that you wanted to share or speak to?
No, we appreciate the opportunity. I mean, this has always been kind of a unique parcel, especially as Jeremy mentioned with the difficult topography. So I think it's, you know, it's kind of, I think, the best of both situations where you get the advantage of the fourteen acres, but obviously, just a small portion of it is really, is really developable, if that.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for taking the time to put a plan together. I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jeremy, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the discussion of twenty-twenty-four Town Meeting zoning-related articles, including MBTA multifamily bylaw. So Laurie, do you want to bring up anything that you've shared so far, or do you want me to bring something up? Either way.
Sure. If it's your pleasure, I would be happy to launch into the draft MBTA bylaw.
Sure. Do you want me to, are you pulling that up, or do you want me to?
Well, I thought that I would pull up the maps first.
Oh, sure.
So that I could explain what the various scenarios are. So just bear with me a minute while I do that. Okay, can you see that? Yep. All right. So the first scenario that I wanted to show you is actually kind of the backwards. So this is option two. So option two includes two sub-districts. So there would be a Southwest Connector Multifamily Development Subdistrict. And so that's the first map that you see on the screen. So that is the New England Baseball Complex right here. And then, of course, there is a developed area that this is the medical facility that is already developed. So this is three-fifty-three and three-thirty-three Southwest Connector. So then the second.
So how many acres would this equal?
All right, just aren't you gonna ask me that? Bear with me a minute, I brought all my various files. It's twenty-eight-point-five-seven.
Okay.
I tested at the bottom of here.
So does that assume then that Avalon is in place, since we have to hit fifty?
So option one would include the Avalon Development and these two properties, and then there's like a tiny parcel right here that would be included. So.
And then do we have to net out the wetlands and the water there? And so there's a twenty-eight?
So I would include the totality of the Avalon Development, so that's forty-two acres. And then this area right here ends up being about, what did you say, Amy? It's twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight-point-five-seven.
Okay, so it'd be the combination of those two areas.
Okay. But twenty-eight-point-seven, it doesn't include what looks to be, are those wetlands in the back and the water?
So that's the totality of the parcel acreage. So it doesn't, it doesn't separate out the wetland areas.
Oh, okay, but we would have to do that ultimately in our calculations.
Yeah, so when we submitted to the state, we will have to use that Excel spreadsheet that Judy Barrett prepared. So we'll have to take out the undevelopable land, which is essentially wetlands. And then we'll have to recalculate it to demonstrate that we have a minimum of fifty developable acres.
Okay.
Okay, so this, this bylaw right here assumes fifteen units per acre. And then the option two, like I said, just has these two parcels within the Southwest Connector Multifamily Development District. And then it includes parcels within the town center. So it includes the parcels that we just discussed, with the exception of these two parcels that he just mentioned in his presentation. So when I did this draft bylaw, I did it without the benefit of that PowerPoint presentation. So I wasn't anticipating that they were gonna include these two parcels over here. So my initial proposal doesn't include them, but I'd be happy to include them if you want to include them. So includes the, that land. It also includes, currently for discussion purposes, the totality of the Harvey parcel, although I know that we talked about maybe only including a portion of that. So that is up for debate tonight. I did also include the current town offices. I did also include, uh, the current town offices. And I included, uh, the Housing Authority property, which is already developed at a density of, I believe, about 18 units per acre. Um, so this would comply with the bylaw. Uh, so I don't anticipate any additional development. I just thought it, it prudent to include, uh, an already developed area. So I thought that I would speak to the, um, the option two, uh, because that includes option one and then additional language for option two, which is the downtown area. Uh, so it's a bit more comprehensive than the option one, uh, which in simplest terms would just be the same exact bylaw with stripping out of all of the language that has to do with the downtown.
Okay. And can you just flip to option one for a minute?
Sure. Uh, you want to go to the map, you mean?
Yeah, it looks like it's right next to it on the PDF tabs there.
Like, yeah, so let me stop share and go to the other one. So just.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was right within the same PDF. It looked like a neighboring tab.
Oh, I thought I opened it, but maybe I didn't. So just bear with me. I'm gonna have to open that. Okay. There we go. So let me share that. I don't know why. Oh, here we go. Okay, so this is, uh, the option one. So like I mentioned, it includes, uh, those two properties that I previously showed you. It includes the small additional parcel, which is like a landlocked parcel. I believe they probably have an easement along this, this driveway. And then it includes the totality of the Avalon Development, which is 42 acres.
Okay. And so option one is, oh, option one is huge. It's 71.72 acres.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. So, uh, do you want me to bring up, uh, the, the draft bylaws so that we can go through?
No, no, you, um, if you wouldn't mind going back to option two. So can you see it right as the next door, like the tab right next to this one? So you don't have to open it again? Does that work?
Um, I don't, I don't think I can do that, or at least I don't know how to toggle between the two. I think I have to stop share and then go into the other one.
I think it's at the top of your window there. Yep, that one.
Oh, I learned a new trick. I didn't know it could do that. Thank you. That's, that's exciting when I learn a new trick.
That's sad when I knew it and you didn't.
Yes, I'm not the most technologically sophisticated planner, I will admit.
Okay, so it's al, so it's almost like instead of the Avalon property, it takes the original ball field and it adds properties downtown. There's a difference.
Yes. So, uh, this one has, uh, two, two pages to it. So, uh, let me move this over.
28.91 plus the 28.57.
So it has this piece. So there are two sub-districts. So there's this piece in option two. And then there's this.
Okay.
So as you recall, it has to be contiguous land.
Okay, so that one is 57.48.
Yes, uh, yes.
Okay, got it. Or, um, yep, okay.
I have a question. Now that we saw the Hudson Street development, which seems really creative and near the downtown, there could be an option three where we do Avalon and just the Hudson Street.
Yeah.
So we don't have the 72 acres. You can always add in properties to the overlay as they come about, but it's great to have the proposal hat in front of us to see actually what we're getting.
So in that case, Amy, we'd have the 42 acres on Avalon plus the Hudson Street was the 13?
Yeah, 13. Plus there's a couple aggressive street, like the Maytech Building, if you included that, is like 1.71 plus the two properties to the right that Lori mentioned that she could add on.
Mm-hmm.
Were, um, point 34 and point 39. So it came to a total of about 16.17 plus the 42.
I like those. So then we're at 58. So we're.
Yeah.
So is that, but is 13 acres, uh, there was a lot of gradient on that. Is it still considered developable?
So the 13 acre piece, uh, well, you shot, saw the development. So they're proposing to segregate the development area along this area here, which is, uh, you know, much flatter and more developable. This area right in here, um, it has a lot of ledge and, uh, a lot of steep slopes. So this area here isn't very developable anyway.
Right. So it wouldn't, we wouldn't be penalized as in it's a steep slope or it's a cliff. We, you can't develop a cliff, obviously, but we can develop that, we can count that in our acreage.
Correct.
Correct.
So they, they do not mandate that we remove shapes, the steep slopes from, uh, the calculation.
Okay, good. All right.
So wetlands we have to remove, but steep slope we don't?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Yep.
So should, should we move into the bylaw at this point?
Yeah. Well, so far I'm curious, what do board members think of either option or an option three or whatever the case? Any feedback from the board on either or other?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like the option three that Amy came up with. Um, I still think we should include um, the Harvey as well as the 18 um, units per acre of the, the senior development, just to get that number in there.
Amy, something there?
Yeah, being on the, um, downtown revitalization committee, I brought it up is if you include the Harvey right now into the parcel, then it's an open developable property, like the way they're coming forth now with the project, we know what we're getting. If you put our Harvey into the MBTA, we don't need to do it. And they can come and do all housing where downtown revitalization wanted to do a river walk. They wanted parks. They wanted a specific layout. But if you just blankly apply the MBTA property on top, then we lose that. Um, we lose whatever hold we have where someone could come forward, another developer could come forward and say, I want to develop the Harvey property. I'd like to be in the MBTA. We can add them in at any time. Like you can add them in.
Mm-hmm.
But once they're in, then they get the 15 units by right per acre. And then they don't have to do the river walk or they don't have to do the park. So it wouldn't necessarily meet what the downtown revitalization was looking for. They could just do.
You know, I, I, I wonder if we can move on to the bylaw because I put in a number of de, design standards that would be mandatory, um, including open space and recreation resources.
Yeah, that's okay. Just want to make sure the board gets to voice their opinion on these maps. It's a big deal. So I don't want to rush through it. So any other comments or feedback on the actual parcels?
I think I'm, I'm more geared towards what we're seeing here with the downtown district for, you know, kind of the higher density housing. I probably tend to, to agree with Amy in terms of making sure and, and Lori, I'm sure you'll speak to this too about the bylaws, but yeah, I just want to make sure that when and if we ever consider that, that we have a very firm understanding of what's going to go in that place. And so it can be developed and, you know, something to be, you know, a real nice part of downtown.
Bill, you have something?
Yeah, I was just sort of looking at this map and I'm wondering if, um, you know, one of the advantages of the Route 20, Route 9 area is wide roads. Right? If we add 15 units per, per acre on a narrow road like Hudson Street, what is that going to do to traffic? Especially vehicles pulling in and out of that street. That's in, especially in that area. That's really narrow as it is.
I need engineer to, um, give an analysis on whether it could handle it.
Well, and I think the other consideration here too, is if we throw in 300 units overnight, um, you know, just absorbing that amount into the school system, I think would be a huge concern as well as resources, police, fire, roads, traffic. Um, I think Hawkinson just, you know, they've had a giant development come in and crush their schools. Um, if we could do, you know, I think we need to do this in a very measured approach in terms of growth and how fast we do it.
What, um, what's the school district over? Is this a Proctor school system over here?
I don't think so. I was Proctor, but the, um, baseball would be Proctor.
I don't know if it would be Proctor or Z.
No.
This would be like Z or Lincoln, I would think. On Hudson Street.
Oh, you mean the, the whole district, that area?
Yeah.
I mean, Proctor, Proctor's over a big Brigham. So it's right there. But if you go in the opposite direction, Z's right there. So it'd be between.
Yeah, Z school's right off Whitney.
And I think it's good by having this versus the baseball, like Anthony said, like he, he had seven three bedrooms where over at the baseball field, they wanted 48 three bedrooms. And that would really, just that alone would add a lot to Proctor and never mind all the other units.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree to that, but I think, you know, don't forget that the whole intent here is we're just zoning this, right? If somebody wants to come in and do that work, it doesn't matter where it is, it's going to be that number of units, whether it's downtown, whether it's over at the baseball field, whether it's wherever we say. Right? It's still going to, you know, impact the town. So, so no matter where we put it, that's, that's not going to matter as much as, like I said, you know, the traffic on Hudson Street adding, you know, 80 or 100 cars on Hudson Street over 80 or 100 cars on Route 9 and Route 20.
Yeah. So Bill, is that, are you saying that option one is something that you like better? Or are you just making an observation in general?
No, I'm making an observation, but I'm really, you know, like I said, you know, and looking at all the, the houses that are around here, right? You know, adding in a complex like that with all those single family homes all around that area. Um, you know, what are the, what are the neighbors going to think type of deal?
I think it's also important to note that this is the downtown area. So in order to, to have a revitalized vibrant downtown, um, you need to have population density to support the businesses. So that is, that is the recommendation that's coming out of the downtown revitalization report. Um, so as you know, the comprehensive rezoning was done in 2009. And, uh, so of course that zoning allowed very small minimum lot sizes in the downtown. And, uh, it, it has spurred certainly some redevelopment, but on a very limited scale. Um, so you know, i- if, if the zoning remains the same, then it is likely that you will continue to get the same, which is the current downtown. So if, and people are okay with the current downtown, then great. But if they want something different than the current downtown.
Well, I think they lack a significant effort for economic development. I, when we say go to the businesses, what businesses are they going to? The gas stations there or? I mean, we need an economic development function and I, I, I continue to be baffled that we overlook it and pretend that housing is going to solve our problem. But anyway, that's just my opinion.
Well, my, my other concern is remember when, you know, we were looking to rezone the, um, um, what's the, the White House up on the hill there? White Cliffs, thank you. I keep thinking Whitney. I don't know why. White Cliffs, right? And the, and, but, but the, you know, the, the blowback from just that small community. Now you're talking a much larger community of single family homes and putting that same type of structure. You know, that was one structure. Now we're saying, well, now somebody can come in and put in a massive structure right there in that 13 acres.
So I would, I would say this to that Bill. First of all, I'm sure you're familiar with that area. I'm certainly familiar with it. It's, you know, it's kind of cut out because of that ledge in that hill there. Spruce Hill is way up over it. And you don't have much housing to the left or the right that would be impacted. Traffic might be my biggest concern there. Um, so that's a concern. Getting back to the ball fields, I think, you know, and I think I've said this before, you know, obviously I don't want to penalize any landowners. So uh, you know, it's always been, we've been talking about making that commercial or business uh, from industrial down in that area, allowing those landowners to develop office buildings, medical facilities, whatever, which would generate more income for the town anyways. So that's what I was thinking. They're, they're not even zoned for that high density housing as it is today down there on Route 9 and 20.
Uh, well, that doesn't address the, the problem that by state law, we have to create a by right 50 acre multi-family district that allows a density of 15 units per acre. So you know, I, I understand that you as a board don't want any multi-family housing, but this is a mandate. This is the state law. So where are we going to put this multi-family housing?
If we do Avalon and in Hudson Street, that covers it.
Exactly.
I don't, I, you keep going back that we're trying to avoid it, but I never hear us saying we're trying to avoid it. I mean, we could go on FedEx or in Amazon and we'd hit the mandate like uh, it doesn't mean it has to be developed. Other towns, you know, you can put it on top of other things, but I like this one down on Hudson Street. And I think it works on Avalon too.
Mm-hmm. Okay, uh, there is also the chance that the state will not allow Avalon to be included in the district. So we haven't received, um, clear guidance on that. So the DHCD has stated that when we have a bylaw that's ready to go, they are willing to review the bylaw to ensure that it will be acceptable to them. Uh, so I'd be happy to submit once we have something that is pretty much, uh, you know, in a state that you folks find acceptable, uh, to see if they are willing to accept Avalon. Um,
It's our town that put it, they put it on different apartment complexes and a hospital. So I don't see why Avalon would be denied, but we can.
Even if it is, if Avalon's denied, to your point about Bartlett Street, put it on Bartlett Street. We could find another spot.
Yeah. And we have till next December, December 2024. It's not like it's a huge rush that it has to be done. I, I, we're going along at a good speed. But I wouldn't panic right now. Grafton just did theirs and there's a due December 2023 because they have MBT in their town. We don't have the MBTA line in our town. So our bylaws aren't due till December 2024.
Okay. So why don't we take a look at the bylaws, speaking of the bylaws?
Okay, so I'm going to stop share so I can pull that up. So one moment. Okay. So I'm going to do option two because that includes the downtown. Okay. Can you see that? Okay?
Yes.
All right. So what I started off, of course, with is the, uh, purposes of the bylaw. So, um, this varies slightly from the option one. So um, this varies slightly from the option one um, because I included language having to do with the downtown. So maybe it would be best to just kind of go section by section and see if people have comments or questions. Okay, so does anybody have comments or questions about the purposes or or want any modifications?
The purpose of the bylaw or?
Of the bylaw, yes.
I had a couple. Where are we on option one or option two?
Option two.
Two. Okay. Let me just, I have it typed out on my screen, but I can't see yours and mine. Um, just one change on number two. Says to diversify the Northborough housing stock and I added create pedestrian friendly development by promoting the creation of multifamily housing with close proximity to shopping eateries, look local services and major transportation.
Yeah, maybe you can send that to me.
Yeah, I have a lot of little changes and it was just, I reviewed it with like the state. Um, the state had a bylaw too. I think Lord did an amazing job. And I just added little things that I saw in the state. Um, the state ideas that they sent out that I just added little words here and there. And since it was near the downtown and we want to create a pedestrian friendly development, I was just adding those words.
Yeah, I did in number five, but to ensure pedestrian friendly development by permitting high density housing in areas that are walkable to shopping eateries, local services and recreation opportunities. But if you want me to combine those into one, then I'd be happy to do so.
All right, maybe I have the wrong one open. My five is different.
Oh, you're on option one? Are you looking at option one?
Maybe. I changed it to option three because I was already thinking of option three in the in my mind, you know, over the weekend. So I probably took things from both.
Okay, I did, uh, I did delete this from option one because if we're talking about um southwest cutoff, it's not gonna be very easy for people to cross Route twenty. Possible, but not maybe advisable to do that. So I I kind of took that out. So applicability, so this is where I talk about the fact that uh, there are two sub-districts, the Southwest Connector, multifamily, the sub-district in the downtown sub-district. And then uh, of course, the relationship to existing zoning. Um, so what I wanted to do with this bylaw is say that um, the the density requirements and dimensional requirements of the underlying district apply. Um, so if you are in the downtown neighborhood district, you're still applying uh complying with those minimum lot sizes. Um, but further on in the regulations, uh, there are differences having to do with heights and densities. So you still have like the setback requirements um of the underlying zoning um, for the yards as well as the minimum lot sizes. So that's what that language says. So under D, of course, um, saying that you have to comply with site plan review. And the planning board is the uh permitting authority. And the planning board has the right to adopt design guidelines specific for this district. So then under letter E, I talk about the types of uses that are allowed. So it's my understanding that the bylaw allows, I mean, sorry, the state law allows um, different types of development. Uh, so you are able to do mixed use developments. You're also allowed to do townhouse development as well as multifamily dwellings. Um, so I tried to think of the commercial uses that would be most relevant um, for either a downtown area or for the Southwest Connector area. And these are the uses that I chose. Now, I limited uh the mixed use development, so the commercial um, to six thousand square feet within the Southwest Connector multifamily development. And that's because when I was speaking with Trammell Crowe, they pretty much said that uh, the three hundred and fifteen unit development that they were proposing was not gonna be able to support retail on its own. So the only retail that they could possibly support would be along the frontage of Route twenty. Um, where that's uh old clubhouse is still standing. It's in very dilapidated shape. So that's why I capped it at six thousand square feet. So within the uh downtown area, there wouldn't be that type of cap. Um, but the state has put certain standards on mixed use development. So they are saying that they will allow mixed use development, but not at the the um exclusion of multifamily development. So they still want to have fifteen units per acre. So the town will get a break on the fifteen units per acre by doing uh mixed use development, by doing some sort of commercial development on the first floor. So when we get down to the heights, you'll see that I put a an incentive in there. Um, so that if you have exclusively mixed use districts, the heights of the, I mean, I'm sorry, exclusively multifamily. So there's no commercial component whatsoever. Then the building height is shorter than if you include a commercial component. So you're allowed to go one story up if you include commercial on the first floor. And then that still gives us the density of fifteen units per acre. So Amy, I see you got your hand up.
Yeah, um, I noticed that you wrote twenty percent of the gross floor area. But the um state said we can go up to thirty three percent of the gross floor area of the bottom floor. So I was just wondering why you picked twenty instead of thirty three percent?
Because I was looking at the building heights. So what I was concerned about in the downtown area is going too tall. Um, so, you know, I wanted to keep with uh the maximum building height of uh forty five feet, which is the maximum height that the zoning bylaw currently allows in the downtown business district. So uh, I'm gonna skip ahead if you don't mind. Well, actually, can we just hold that thought for a minute? Because I want to see if anybody has any questions on these particular uses. So I have um, I have the main uses, the principal uses up top. And then I go into accessory uses. Uh, so I know in particular for development like Trammell Crowe was proposing, they'd be interested in doing a clubhouse. So I allowed that as an accessory use. Um, if somebody is living in one of the units, they could do, uh, you know, their work from home um, for the home professional office and the personal service, uh, garage, of course, um, or a carport. And then, of course, we have the solar installation. Uh, one of the things that has become more popular these days is doing canopy mounted installations over parking lots. And the benefit is it works like a garage. Um, so it keeps the weather away from the vehicles. So the um, the people parking on under them tend to really like them. And then it has the benefit of uh creating electricity. Amy?
Yeah, sorry. I'd I'd send these all to you, but I want to bring it up in front of everybody or I could send them and we could talk about it next time. But when I was looking at accessory uses, the state said communities should consider allowing sex accessory uses appropriate to multifamily. But it says if you have something like a home office or a home personal service, they wrote you should have home professional office with no employees and who do not have regular customers, clients coming to the office. Because it is a multifamily, they said you wouldn't want, it says you wouldn't want to have clients which generate noise. And you don't want, you know, because it's different than having a single family house where you have people coming to your house to get haircuts or or whatever. They have the clause in that you can have a home professional office or a home personal service as long as it wasn't one that had employees or customers that come and go. Because this is like an apartment complex and you don't want to be, you know, you don't have an office building with people coming and going it next door.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make that change.
Yeah, I can send it to you. And another thing that they mentioned for allowing, say you do mixed use in the downtown, they had some other uses like community space, educational uses. So like, say, maybe one of the downtown. If it's thirty three percent commercial, they listed you can have like, if it's not residential, you could also include a community space or something else. I could just.
Yeah, the exempt uses, uh, that would include like a daycare center. Um, or, you know, like a little preschool or something like that. So that that would be included under the exempt uses definition. Um, passive recreation, are you talking about something other than a clubhouse or passive recreation?
Um, well, this wasn't accessory. This was they had allowed by right on a ground floor, community space under mixed use development where you have the retail store, deli, brew pub. They had community space, educational uses, retail, which you had, offices, artist studios, maker space, small scale food production. I could just send you the list that they had and and we can pick and choose like what we think would fit in our downtown.
Okay.
It was just, yeah, a couple extra.
Send that along. Yeah, absolutely. I'm totally open to the more more uses. These are what I could think of that would make sense, but uh certainly the artist space absolutely makes sense, so.
I just randomly went to the state and they had these um examples.
Okay, anybody else have any uses that I should add to this list? Or takeaway?
I do not.
I I can't see everybody like Bill. I can't see.
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
My only comment is um, sometimes for these, I feel like we put in a little disclaimer, no use variances allowed. So I don't know if that's something we consider or else this becomes open. Skies.
All right, can I add that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so moving right along. So the density and dimensional requirement. So as I mentioned, what I envisioned is that we would go for the most part by whatever the underlying zoning sets. Um, so where I wanted to change that has to do with the height. So the attached and the density. So the attached single family or townhouse. So this is Southwest Connector. So this is the New England Ballfields first. Um, so what I was looking at um for cues was the Avalon development. So I actually did a little study uh in the building department to determine the heights of the existing um, uses over in Avalon. And this complied. So they have uh four story multifamily dwellings um, that meet the height definition of fifty feet. Um, so I know it's a trend and as was mentioned uh in the presentation that we received tonight that um some developments include the parking on the first floor. So uh, they work it into the topography of the land. And they mask the first floor so that it looks like it's either retail or so it doesn't look like a garage. But they include a garage parking, so that is good from a stormwater standpoint because it's minimizing the amount of impervious surface. Um, so what I said here is that if the parking is to be provided on the first floor of a multifamily dwelling, they'd be able to increase the maximum height to sixty feet. So they would get a bonus for doing that. So then the only other way that they can get to the five stories or the sixty feet is if they include some sort of mixed use, so some sort of commercial use in the development. Um, so the horizontal mixed use is probably what they would do. Uh, so that would be some sort of retail, most likely along Route twenty. And that would enable some of their buildings to get to sixty feet. So the density would still be, the maximum density would still be fifteen units per acre. So this allows them to build a clubhouse. Um, so you know, I I just, usually clubhouses are a single story, so thirty five feet should be more than generous. Um, sometimes they might have like a game room down below and a restaurant above or vice versa. So I wanted to give them the ability to to go to thirty five feet.
How tall are the Avalon ones? You might have said it. I missed it.
Yeah, so when I looked at the five story buildings, um, I believe it was fifty eight feet. So if you remember, height is measured from the midpoint of the roof. So it's not from the very top tip top of the roof. Um, so this would work with Avalon. Avalon would comply.
Okay. And so the baseball would kind of match Avalon.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So then with the downtown, I thought that those heights would be too tall for the downtown area because I figured that probably what we're looking for, and I don't even know the exact height of Four West Main Street, but I figured you wanted to stay somewhere in that line. And you didn't want to go over it. I know Four West Main Street is a five story story building, but it also has a gambrel roof. Um, so what I was thinking is if you're doing a townhouse, then you would stick with the standard height for a single family, which is thirty five feet. And then if you're doing the multifamily um with no mixed use whatsoever, you'd be capped at that thirty five feet, except if you do the first story parking structure, then you can go up to the forty five feet. So this would encourage that um have excuse development. So it would enable them to do the first floor retail, which I know is uh, you know, something that we want um, in order to get the the higher height. So then I put some extra language. So this language is only an option two. It's not an option one. I was thinking about that um, that mix, that that current brick building and also the town hall. So those would be adaptive reuse of existing buildings. So they would enable to, would be enabled to fit however many apartments they can fit within reason, within the existing walls of the structure. Um, so I was looking particularly at um, the uh, gosh, I I'm running a blank on the name of it, the residence of the Mills or something like that.
The ball.
I believe it's located on Hudson.
Mm hmm. And Allen Street, yeah.
Yeah.
So that building has forty units in it, believe it or not. So it's um, you know, it's very dense, but that's how many units they were able to fit. So why not? So they were able to accommodate the parking and fit that number in there. So I thought it would be nice to be a little bit flexible for existing for the adaptive reuse of existing buildings. So we can encourage them to be reused instead of demolished. Any comments on that section? Uh, Amy, you probably want to ask your questions now.
Yeah. Um, well, no, I was just. Um, well, no, I was just, I was thinking to myself what buildings would be reused downtown, I was trying to think. In my mind, what um, buildings would actually be reused.
I know you mentioned a question and I've already forgotten it, and I told you that I hold it until we get to this point.
So I have a question back. I have a question back on E under use, under mixed use developments.
Oh, okay.
I think um, in the first sentence where it says mixed use developments. Developments shall include the following non-residential uses, like. The other towns that do use mixed res- mixed use. Require the mixed use, like. I I feel like if we're gonna use the downtown and that's what the downtown revitalization wanted on Blake Street. If we say may. Then there's no, they don't have to do it, it's gonna end up all housing like. And then there'll be no downtown, there'll be nothing else to see other than Cumberland Farms and gas stations if we don't say. You know, if you're doing mixed use, you have to have businesses in the bottom. If, I think they shall include the following, that's what I've read in other towns. Where ours is May.
I wonder if um, so the one concern that I have is in order to make retail successful, you. You need traffic. So my concern about. Uh, you know, the the property, the Maytag property that the presentation was made this evening. If we require first-floor retail. They may not be able to fill those spaces when you go into the. Development. Certainly would along Hudson Street. So they have, you know, those two structures that. Were along the Hudson Street frontage. But as you go into the depth of the property. Um, they may not be able to support that level of retail, just because, you know, it's a dead end.
I agree, I wasn't thinking about them being in the mixed use. I agree, I was thinking on Hudson Street, the Maytag building being in mixed use, but not. The fourteen acres, like the fourteen acres I thought would fall under just the housing.
Mm-hmm.
Because I agree, I don't think that could all be mixed use, like Blake Street is smaller. So I think Blake Street could handle the mixed use. But I don't think. Zero Hudson could. And plus, that's not really in the downtown. It's.
Right, I mean, I I'd be open to changing, I mean, of course, this is you guys' bylaws, so whatever you tell me to do is what I'll do, but. I I think that if you want to include. The parcels in Blake Street. That would be appropriate to include. Um, but I need direction from you folks that that's what you want me to do.
I was just thinking along bylaws, like there should be one overlay that's just all housing. And one overlay that includes mixed use. And then we can drop the overlay on the properties that. Would fit either one.
So you mean you want the Southwest Connector to be all multi-family with no mixed use? And then you want this one to to mandate the mixed use?
Well, I was really just going for option three with Avalon and Hudson Street right now, so. I wasn't thinking about the baseball fields as much.
Yeah, but even if you do that and you require the the mixed use, right? Um, do we end up with a bunch of empty storefronts like we do with that, with that building up by uh. Over by Dunkin' Donuts where. Yeah, there's nothing on the bottom, I mean, that thing looks. You know, i- it's not a good look for the town if they're just empty buildings, right? Let let the developers come up with the idea, not not us regulate it.
The the empty building is uh, the empty first floor is because they haven't completed construction. So they are not able to get an occupancy permit for those spaces, but. Your point is well taken, if there's no demand.
Right.
Then that's what you're gonna end up with, is you're gonna end up with empty storefronts, so.
Wait, how'd they get a permit to put in, how'd they get a permit to move in at all? There are still houses, people live up on the top floor, so they got a permit for occupancy on one floor but not the bottom floor?
Bob's.
Right. There were some problems with uh, the parking lot, which I'm sure. If Bob's still on, he can speak to. That um, have to be corrected before they can get any occupancy permits on the first floor.
I'm 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 here and I can respond to that if you'd like. The project was permitted by the ZBA. With no timeframe for the ending of it. And there was no performance bond required for it. Uh, they constructed the building. And the uh, developers who had been reasonably cooperative up until then. Said that they have cash flow issues and we'd like to at least get the upper levels. Um. Occupied, and I said I'm okay with that. Um, but I also wanted a site plan. Um. Review by the engineer. And I said I can. Uh, through my authority, give you occupancy on the upper pieces cuz they were complete to the building code. But the uh, provision is that they will not get any building permits for the lower pieces. Until the fifteen items that violate the approved site plan are corrected.
Wow.
They have not corrected it yet, and they have tried to get people in there, and I have told them they will not get a building permit. Do anything in there until they fix the site plan. They have some pretty significant issues to fix, and I will not give them a permit. Until those site plan issues are fixed one hundred percent.
Got it, okay, we don't have to spend time on that, just curious, anyway, not to distract.
May I?
I have a question.
Just on the mixed use, if I can just interject for a second. If you look at one thirty Main Street and two sixty-sixty-nine West Main Street. Those have been full, I think, ever since they've been built, and so those are mixed use. So it seems to work in certain areas.
And also the whole backing behind adding housing to downtown is to bring in the commercial. So if we fill up the whole downtown with housing, there's gonna be nothing to go to. But if we're allowing higher-density housing downtown, the whole purpose of it was to. Bring people in to drive commercial uses.
Mm-hmm.
But if they don't build any space for the commercial uses, then all we're gonna have is housing, and then there is no downtown.
So uh, one thought that I have, uh, so we haven't gotten into the design standards yet. Um, but we'll get to them, that's further on down the list. One thing that I could do is I could include in the di- design standard, the mandate that the. Whatever the buildings are that are along the lot frontage have to include mixed use, so that would be mandated. Uh, what do you think of that? So then if you have buildings that are further in. Um, then you wouldn't have to do the mixed use on those buildings where you wouldn't have the traffic.
Thinking of the the, what we just saw earlier tonight, the problem would be parking. Right, where would they park? Are they gonna park across route, across Hudson Street and have to cross to get to the building?
I felt like they had parking for those units. Over to the the right side, but I'd have to look at that again.
Yeah, but that was for units, not for retail. Retail's gonna.
So the benefit of doing. Mixed use is that typically you have different hours of occupancy. So what you have to carefully balance is uh, the uses that. Um, are operating during the daytime hours when people are at work. And then. You know, when when those businesses are closed, it's used by the residential occupants. And then, of course, you have to always have some. Parking spaces that are for the residential occupants, because there are some that. You know, have weird hours, they might work nights, or maybe they work from home, and so. Um, but that's something we can think about, so essentially what you're telling me is you want me to figure out how to mandate. A certain amount of mixed use.
I was just thinking if we did it downtown, like if it was, if there was a whole area downtown like Blake Street. I would like mixed use on Hudson Street. What we saw tonight. I don't think, like I said before, didn't need mixed use, unless the Maytag, Maytech building. I was just thinking.
Do you want me to include some uh, some of the properties on Blake Street?
I guess it's up to the whole group if we see what we're gonna include in the end.
Yeah, I didn't think Blake Street was part of this, correct? Of any of the options.
Not currently, but that doesn't mean we can't change.
What are the acres?
I I.
Oh, sorry, Millie, go ahead.
I I wasn't intending to include Blake Street. I'm just wondering what location would be mixed use then?
Definitely the Harvey parcel, you know, what we were talking about in the downtown revitalization plan. Is having the frontage. The the buildings along the frontage, so along the Hudson Street frontage. And the um, let's see. Do I? Uh. No, I closed out the other ones, they're not on my tab. So if I. If we include the Harvey parcel, then there's a frontage along Main Street and there's frontage along Hudson Street. So those could be mixed-use buildings, and then the interior. So the way it was envisioned in the downtown revitalization plan. Is the driveway that currently cuts through the parcel would become a roadway. And so you would now have a connection from Route twenty to Hudson Street. Via this new roadway.
Mm-hmm.
So. The. What would happen in the interior of the parcel? In the development scenario would be a combination of multi-family and. Uh, recreation, so if I remember correctly, they proposed like a totlot and then a canal walk. And um, you know, just. Benses and like green space.
I would still be really concerned about any, any retail on Hudson Street, I mean. I'm looking at your list right here, restaurants, how are you gonna have a restaurant? Enough parking for a restaurant on, or a brew pub? On Hudson Street. I mean, that road isn't wide enough for two, is barely wide enough for two cars.
So it would be on the Harvey parcel. So the parcel is, so the parking wouldn't be, so they would have the entrance. Uh, to the parcel off of Hudson Street and off of Main Street. And then they would create a parking lot within the parcel.
Right, that, how would that be a roadway through the Harvey lot? I mean, where would it exit onto? Because the Maytech building is right in the way.
So um. Let me see if I can bring that up. I'm gonna.
I think the building would have to come down, I think it would go from Hudson to Main Street. Because there's a river in the middle of the two buildings.
Exa- right.
Okay. So. Under this scenario, so this is the Harvey parcel right here. So this building would be demolished.
Ah, gotcha.
So they would like completely redevelop, so uh, the brick building that we were talking about, the last presentation was here.
Yep.
Uh, so this one would go away. And uh, it would just be all new construction, so right now this is dumpster storage.
But again, we're not talking about us developing it, we're talking about us zoning it.
Yes.
Right, that's gonna be up to the developer on how they wanna do it, so. Uh, my concern here is that if we're gonna word this, we need to word it correctly, or else we're gonna end up with a restaurant with. On-street parking. On Hudson, on Hudson Street.
No, we'll never have on-street parking because they're required to comply with the parking regulations, so. We'll, we'll get into that, that's further down in the bylaw, in the design standards. But they will be required to provide off-street parking within a parking lot that that fully complies with the parking regulations.
Yep.
Okay, but but that's my point, right, is that again, we're not developing this, we are only zoning it. So.
Correct, but you will be permitting it. You you're the permitting authority through site plan review.
To a limit. But they still have a by right as well.
It's by right, but what that means is that you have to approve it as long as they comply with the regulations.
Right.
So I've got a number of design standards in there, so if they comply with all those de- design standards. Then you have to approve it. Um, but the design standards mean that they have to comply with the off-street parking requirements.
Yeah. That's why as a. Planner right now or planning board member. I wouldn't wanna put both Harvey and Hudson Street in, because those are two. You'd have a hundred and sixteen to a hundred and ninety on Harvey and a hundred on Hudson now. Like, that's a lot of growth really quickly in one area.
Yeah, that's a cluster.
Yep, I would either pick one or the other, I would go for the Hudson Street one.
Mm-hmm.
And then Harvey, if someone comes to us in the future and says I'll do X Y Z. Then as a board, we can decide, then we add them into the overlay. Or we don't, and then we can say, oh, but you have to do a riverwalk, or maybe we only want a hundred. Units, then we have some leverage, but if we put it in right now, we lose all leverage.
But we have to put in something.
Yeah.
But yeah, that would be Hudson Street or. Yeah.
Right. And so, I I I still, I mean, I look at that big lot and it's just, you know, somebody wants to come in and and level that out. Are you gonna be able to deal, is that street gonna be able to deal with that much traffic and? Those type of buildings that were, that we're saying that by right they're allowed to do.
The Harvey would be the same because they could exit onto Hudson Street too.
Right, but it's a smaller lot, that's a thirteen-acre lot, right?
But only three of them are.
Thirteen-acre lot, but the the uh, Harvey property is more developable. They also have uh, slope issues, you know, all you have to do is look. At the town hall parking lot, you'll see that there's a significant slope.
Right.
So they are also constrained by steep slopes. Um, but it's not as bad. As with the Maytag property.
Right, but we are saying it is developable. Right, so we can't stop them from developing there, so we have to assume wherever we put this, it's gonna be developed, so if that site gets developed. What does that do to Hudson Street? That's my concern.
But it's developable anyways.
Right. No, that's, but that's my concern, that's why I'm, I'm really concerned about using this and not the one over at Route twenty and Route nine. Where it can handle that offload of traffic. And they're both developable, so it's gonna be the same number of units, whether it's here or whether it's over there.
No, it was three fifteen there, and it was ninety-seven here.
Yeah.
But I mean, as far as the MBTA communities is concerned, it's the same number of units.
Yeah, but they're not.
Seven hundred and fifty units is what we're talking about total.
They're only gonna build ninety-seven here on the Hudson Street. Even though it's, it's zoned to build a lot more, we still get credit. Even if they only do the ninety-seven.
Okay. I just, y- you're you're still using the number of just that one little sliver and not the entire thing going eastbound.
Mm-hmm.
Right, if you were to add in that entire thirteen acres going eastbound. If they were to come in and develop that entire area, what does that do to the traffic on Hudson Street?
When you're doing it in advance, you can get in. They do out the plan, so if they say it's gonna be trails. There could be like conservation restriction or something, so they can't develop it in the future.
That's not my, but but we are putting in a by right that they can do it.
Well, I think it would be with the agreement of what they brought forward, right, Lori? Just like the baseball, if they come to you in advance, they can have an agreement. That we're only gonna build ninety-seven, and we're gonna do the trails, and we're gonna do the kayak launch, it's not like. Putting it on and saying, now you can do whatever you want.
The town could execute a uh, development agreement if the property owner is willing to do so.
But if we do that, then it's no longer developable, which means it's no longer, it no longer complies with the MBTA communities.
No, it still does. It still does, Lori, right, just like we were gonna do with the baseball.
Yeah, I mean, it's a li- it's a little bit uh. We're we're in this limbo state where they haven't given us clear guidance. On how they're treating comprehensive permit and development agreements. So it's my understanding that. That I I just can't tell you definitively because they haven't told me definitively. So what I, what I suggest is that, like I said, we submit, once we have the bylaw to. Uh a point where you're satisfied, we submit it to DHCD. Have them do the evaluation and tell us whether they're gonna deem this okay or huh? So then we go to a town meeting and we have that level of assurance.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna ask that. So that comes before town meeting?
It does, yep.
And then we could.
So that way, if we need to make tweaks, so if the DHCD says. You know, we're not gonna accept this for this reason. So maybe they say. You know, because of all of your environmental constraints, we're gonna require you to do eighteen units per acre, not fifteen units per acre. Because that's gonna pretty much provide us with the seven hundred and fifty units or whatever. Then we can make that tweak before we go to town meeting, instead of running the risk of them denying us after town meeting and. Uh we all have eggs on our face and have to go back to town meeting and fix it.
But if we go to the state first, then we could do the development agreement before going to town meeting?
Yeah, I I need clarification on that. I just don't wanna misspeak and um.
And there is no rush for April town meeting. I mean, we could do a fall town meeting like other towns do.
We have to do a special one, yes.
Right, but we could, I think they they might do it for the fire station anyways.
My my fear is that what if we go to spring town meeting and it fails, then. We have nothing fired. I mean, if it goes, so if we go to spring town meeting and it fails, then we have the opportunity to revise it and go to fall town meeting. And then we'll still be okay, we'll still be expanding. Whereas if we. If we wait until the fall and it fails, then where are we?
We don't have to wait two years to come back.
I'm sorry?
We don't have to wait two years to come back with a failed.
We would have to modify. So if we bring it to town meeting in the spring and it fails. Then we would have to modify the bylaw in order to present it again at a fall town meeting. Which chances are we would wanna modify anyways to address whatever the reason is for the failure at the spring town meeting.
What if it fails at both meetings?
Well, then we're gonna be penalized.
And what is the official, what is the official penalty?
Uh litigation is the number one penalty. And then also we lose access to pretty much all state grants.
All straight state grants.
Uh yeah, they just added a a whole bunch of other state grants to the lists that we will no longer be eligible for. There are some state grants where they'll just penalize us, so we'll lose points for not being in compliance. But we would still be eligible to apply. So I I can forward you the list. It's it's pretty expansive at this point.
And and what do, are these annual grants that we generally apply for?
So one of the grants that I have an interest in applying for this year is a Mass Works grant to extend sewer service to Route nine. So we won't be eligible. Um another one is for downtown revitalization activities. Um then another uh White Cliffs grants, uh so the underutilized properties.
Well, that's on the list too.
Another one. I'm sorry?
That's on the list too, that we wouldn't be able to.
Yeah, I believe that's on the updated list that they just sent out.
We could go for this February though, because we're in compliance right now. It would be the year after.
Okay, so.
I think they're due uh the first week of, it's either the first week of May or the first week of June, I can't remember.
And we don't have any choice on this MBTA community.
It is law.
It used to be a choice, the new um. The new uh mayor or whoever came in, governor. They changed the way they um read the law. Now, it used to be. You just didn't get the grants and now they're gonna start to penalize because I think a lot of towns are saying, okay, well, we never got the grants anyways. Which was us too. We never got the grants anyways, so.
Right, that's my.
Why do it? So now they say, well, okay, now we're gonna slap you with penalties.
So they've already launched litigation against um. One community that Holden, the town of Holden snubbed their nose.
Yeah.
And they didn't do any of the compliance paperwork that we've done. So they uh filed a lawsuit against them.
I mean, but again, we could still throw it on Amazon and comply. If it all, if we had an emergency and then you could move it if you really wanted to. Like, we have plenty of areas where it can fall on. I don't know why.
My concern is we're doing all this to be compliant with the MBTA and that the MBTA is gonna fail anyways, so you know. There's ridership is way down. Billions of the whole system. Nobody's going into Boston anymore, just saying.
They call it MBTA, but it's actually, it's just a community. I know I work for the MBTA, so every time I hear it, I cringe, but. It's not the MBTA that's doing it, it's the state for additional housing.
You're hurting Bill's feelings now.
No, no, I'm not. I'm not trying to.
Good question, Lori, before it's again.
All of this and not have any real benefit from it other than than um. Maybe moderate, moderate benefit, but nothing real.
Well, hopefully we'll have more more people live in downtown to bring more energy and vibrancy into the downtown area, so.
I would love to think so.
Quick question, um Lori, did you, do you know if they started, there's a feasibility study we have to do to get more than ten percent? Affordable housing.
So I have a conference call, so as the kickoff meeting is actually scheduled for next week. So the consultant that was assigned to us is RKG, so. It's not the same gentleman who we've been working with on the downtown revitalization. It's somebody new that I've never met before. Um so uh we have uh that conference call set up and then we'll take it from there, so. The next section in the bylaw, uh if you folks are ready to move on. Oh, what am I doing? I didn't mean to be on that one. Uh, let's see. I think I'm gonna have to stop sharing. Are we also with these maps?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so let me go back to the other. Let's see. Are you still seeing this? On my screen? Nope.
Nope.
What happened here? Somehow I lost my view. Okay, oh, there we go. Like I said, not technologically very good. Okay, there we go. All right, so uh are we ready to move on from the uses?
I I am. Everyone else good?
Yep.
I am.
And from the density and the heights.
Yep.
Okay, so the next section had to do with affordable housing. Um so this is what, so I I applied for technical assistance. From the um mass housing partnership. Um to help us with the analysis of uh. Essentially our affordability within the town. To see if we could increase uh the ten percent set aside. So in the regulation, it says that we can only require, so it caps the number of affordable dwelling units. To ten percent. And it's of moderate income families, so it doesn't allow you to go to uh low-income families, which is sixty-five percent. Of uh median family income, median household income. It requires you to to go to moderate, which is a hundred percent. So you need to do an analysis um to demonstrate that. Uh you would not be making developments unaffordable to build. By including mandating greater than ten percent. Uh allocation of affordable units. So right now, I just, as a placekeeper, put in the ten percent. Um so, and of course, if you only have a four-unit. Uh multifamily, then it's not affordable to mandate that one of those units be restricted to. Moderate income households. So you usually have to put some sort of like minimum threshold. And I did, and I set it at ten dwelling units. Um so this would only apply to projects that contain ten dwelling units, so. Um if you're just doing a townhouse development with eight dwelling units, you would not have to provide any affordable units.
Okay, Amy, did you have a question there?
Um, you mentioned low income is sixty-five percent and then you said moderate is a hundred. Is moderate eighty or a hundred? I just don't get it all.
I think it's a hundred.
What is the eighty percent AMI that they talk about?
Um, I think it's just the lower, I mean, the upper of low income, but you know, let me, let me verify that.
I don't know either. I see all these. I just wanna make sure the amount that we use is the right amount, so it's included in the uh S H I. You know. Because when I was reading the state, I didn't totally get it, but they said you have to have certain things. To make sure it's included in the S H I. And if we don't include it in the S H I, we're gonna start dipping below the ten percent. So if we're gonna have affordable being built, we wanna make sure it qualifies.
There, yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, go ahead, Millie. Who is going? Sorry. Did I cut somebody off? I was just gonna say, um, for the project we just looked at, I mean, that's like one unit per building primarily. He had like nine or ten, so that's not. That's not too bad, but he didn't seem psyched about it overall. So I'd be curious to know, you know, you mentioned this to him. I don't know if you have a subsequent conversation, but. I'd wanna know, like, is that truly something that they'd, I'd hate to find out at the end if we pick Hudson, that they say, well, the affordable thing knocks it out. We don't wanna do it.
Then it would still count under our MBTA and he doesn't do it.
Oh, I guess.
We're not mandating development. We're just providing the opportunity for development.
Okay. I see a lot of nine dwelling units.
And he planned it was unaffordable.
No, but the total, it's the total, right? Oh, but you mean just nine dwelling, one.
So, so this is just the creation of a bylaw. It may or may not result in a single unit being built. So the state isn't requiring us to build anything. They're just requiring us to set the stage for development.
I know, I keep having to change my mindset on that. Okay, I'm with you.
So if ten is the number and he does all units that are nine. He still won't be exempt from doing all the affordable, right? If he does ten nine units.
It's the total development.
Yeah.
So the the ten percent is based on ninety-seven units. And then he has to go up, so it's uh ten units that he would have to provide.
Why don't you just go with the percentage of units versus ten dwelling units, which is what I think it says?
Cause I'm averaging up.
Okay.
So if you have a decimal, then you go to the greatest uh the whole number. So you can't build a seventh of an affordable unit.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah. Okay, so under here, um uh what this language says is that. Um if you're doing a phased project, you have to build the affordable housing in accordance with the phasing. So if in phase one. You have twenty units, then you'd have to build two affordable units if ultimately your goal is to build ten.
Yeah, okay.
And then uh the affordable units have to be interspersed throughout the development. And they shouldn't uh be distinguishable from the market rate unit, so nobody will know that that's an affordable unit. And they all have the same access to all the same amenities as everybody else. Okay, so now we get into the design standards. Um so. This is, this is the stuff that they have to do. So it's not something that it's discretionary, so design guidelines are discretionary. So they could decide to comply with design guidelines or not. It's just guidelines, it just says, this is what we would like to do. If you don't wanna do them, then that's okay, but we'd be sad. Um but, design standards are mandated. Um so they don't have the choice. They can ask for, they can submit a written waiver request. But then that's up to you whether you wanna grant the waiver or not. So that's totally discretionary and up to you. Um so I put in certain design standards for the buildings. Um so what this says is, of course. Uh the front facade of the building should be oriented towards the public street. Um but if you have a project like the Hudson Street project that was presented this evening. So you have buildings that are located behind the ones that are on the frontage. Then those buildings would be situated among the the driveway. So they would face the driveway instead of the street. Um, let's see. So then I put language in here under letter C that says. If you have multiple buildings, the taller buildings shall be set back from the public street. So what this says is that the massing. So the height and the architecture of the buildings that are along the public street. Have to take cues from the buildings that are on either side or have some sort of visual relationship to those buildings. So if you think of the project tonight. They took some architectural cues from that multifamily building, the five-unit building that's located next door. So that would be compliant with this bylaw. So the size of those buildings, so those were nine-unit buildings, but they were of a similar scale. To the building next door, the five unit. Um so that is what we're looking for. So if you are located along Hudson Street and most of the buildings are two and a half story buildings. You would have a two and a half story building along Hudson Street. And then if you wanted to go taller, you wanted to go to a four-story building, it would have to be in back. So it wouldn't be visible from the street.
And that would have to be a separate building. It couldn't be one of the units behind that's still attached.
Um so you could, so this is only in the circumstance where you have multiple buildings on a single parcel.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um so then we get back into the New England architecture materials. Um this is from the design guidelines, so this would be a must. It's no longer a guideline. Um so then, of course, uh we don't want any blank walls. So they would have to um modulate the the building facades. Um make it look interesting. So then when we have buildings that have multiple non-residential tenants on the first floor. The fuss, there should be differences in the facades to distinguish the storefronts from each other.
Mm-hmm.
Again, to make it more interesting. Again, to make it more interesting. No blank walls adjacent to streets. Um, flat roofs. You can do flat roofs, but only if you do. Special architectural elements like parapets and cornices, so decorative details. Like they used to do in the eighteen hundreds, uh, to make the buildings look fancy. And then, of course, the mechanical equipment will be screened from view. So uh, from pedestrians.
Or Amy, or something?
Yeah, the state had it where not just the rooftop mechanical, but. You know, like, say there's mechanical. On the um, site. That is.
Yes. You know, what I did is I went to look at our design standards that we currently have in our zoning bylaws, and I didn't want to repeat. Um, so there's language in here. Uh, up above. So it says, in addition to the site design standard set forth in section seven oh nine zero two zero. And the off-street parking and loading requirements. They have to apply to these ones. So there's already language in that section that says that if you have any um. Like dumpsters or any on-the-ground um, utilities, you have to screen those.
Okay, and I noticed in E your balconies. Should we make note that balconies have to be on the back? I don't know if people care, but that was a big complaint. With that building downtown, everybody's like. The balconies are on the front, everybody's hanging towels and. That was actually um, in a survey from Master Plan, and it said have the balconies on the back. I don't know. If, you know, I, I saw Hudson Street buildings today that didn't have balconies on the front, but. I, I don't know what people think.
It depends on the architecture, because I've seen some absolutely lovely balconies, particularly in Paris. That are along the fronts of buildings and they're gorgeous. So I think I agree with you. I really don't like those balconies. But I think it has more to do with the architecture of the building. The, and then it has to do with the fact that there are balconies there.
I think it's some like, if you, there are some really big high-rise apartments, and then there's a lot of stuff on the balconies, like. Tricycles and. You know. Everything. And, and it doesn't bother me, but it does bother some people. I did notice. In the master plan survey. So it's not even like what the balcony looks like. It's more like. How much stuff? Is stored on the balconies that's in public view. It's kind of like. We're hiding the mechanical equipment, but you can have a balcony full of. Items. And I, and I don't know. It does. It doesn't bother me, but it might. Other others, especially if it's on Main Street, which. We don't have a district on Main Street right now, so. I was just bringing it up because I remember reading it in a survey, and even like, I went back to the design review minutes and Tony Abu even said, you know, you don't want balconies on the front.
Not, not unless you can make some sort of a, you know. HOA arrangement with the developer that basically says you can't put all that stuff on, because I've seen some nice balconies and they have Christmas lights or they have. You know, decor and furniture that I think does look kind of nice.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, I don't know. I'm just bringing it up because I've read it twice now. But. I don't know.
Well, maybe it's something we can think about.
Maybe on the streets you can't, but, but on the like drive, I don't know.
I know that I've lived in apartments with balconies and I loved having the balcony because I love plants. Yeah. And so I always have um, flowers cascading down and. You know, some people do a beautiful job with their balconies and I'd love to sit out and have the fresh air. So it's, it's definitely an, an amenity for the residents who live in the multifamily.
Yeah.
But I hear you. Sometimes it can look kind of nasty.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll think about that. So then we move on to site design. And, and um, of course, I, I wanted to make sure that. We were really thinking carefully about pedestrian walkways. And make sure, making sure that there were really good pedestrian connections between parking areas and buildings and also. Between buildings and. From the new development to. The sidewalk system that's on the public way. So I did put, this is kind of uh, my preference, so I'm interested in hearing your thoughts. I really like concrete. Uh, walkways because they last like eighty years. And they just look classier. So I had put in there that they have to do concrete. And also that any curbing has to be vertical granite or vertical concrete. So oftentimes when you have. The sidewalks abutting, uh, parking lots, they pour the curb and the um. Concrete sidewalk as a single piece, so then you don't have weeds coming up in the cracks. Between the curb and the sidewalk. And I think that really looks uh, very classy. So. Are you folks on, on board with that? Um, then I put in stuff about uh. You know, y- you have to have landscaping and pedestrian amenities, outdoor dining, sidewalks, et cetera. That's in the front yard. No parking in the front yard.
Right.
Um, then, of course, we're gonna talk a little bit about outdoor lighting. And then we move on to off-street parking. Uh, so this talks about um. This is particularly important in the downtown area where you may have. Properties that are going to be developed that abut each other. One. I'm sorry. One of my pet peeves is when you have a parking lot, a budding a parking lot, and then you have an island in the middle. That prohibits connection between the two parking lots. It's really land consumptive, in my opinion. Like, I don't mind if there are street trees in between. But if there's a drive aisle connecting the two parking lots, then if one parking lot is. Empty and the other one is full. Then you have the option of going into the next parking lot and finding a parking space instead of going back out into the street. And then going back into the adjacent parking lot. I hate that. So this would allow the shared and encourage, strongly encourage shared parking. Um, and it also tells you where the parking can happen. So it would be. In a parking garage on the first floor of multifamily structures. On the side or rear buildings underground. And then we get into the common open space. So within the Southwest Connector Multifamily Development Sub District. It would be required to have. A minimum of forty percent of the total tract set aside as, as protected open space. And then it tells you what you can do with the open space. So the open space has to be large, contiguous. And it has to be appropriate for these particular uses. Um, it cannot include parking lots, driveways, roads or ways. And these are the types of uses that are allowed. Um, because the downtown area. Is more constrained. We're talking about smaller parcels. I cut that down to only twenty percent of the tract. Um, I just thought that that was more doable. And still enabling you to achieve the fifteen units per acre. So if you have a large M D O D project within. The downtown area. Uh, you can do these outdoor amenities, so you'd be encouraged to do these. And then the last bit is uh, given the planning board to waive. Pretty much anything in this bylaw. If they deem it appropriate for these reasons. So uh, questions or thoughts, changes?
I just have one quick question. So the open space, right? So if they can't build anything on it because we're requiring forty percent of open space, does that remove it from? Developable? Because the whole point of this is to create housing, not to create open space.
Yeah, so we would have to go through that calculation. So I have not gone through that Excel spreadsheet. Uh, so it is possible that we might have to modify that then. Um, when, when I go through that Excel spreadsheet, I didn't want to go through that. I, I didn't know what you folks would think of this bylaw. And also, we haven't settled on specific locations. So I can't really do that. Analysis until I know. The locations that we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, good question, though. And then can we sometimes make concessions like? If, if so, say open space, we can't mandate because it cuts into what would be developable, but we make it an option. And if they. Opt to create that open space, they get whatever. I don't know, maybe. I guess density isn't a carrot here, but there's something they could get in exchange. So maybe we could be creative in that way or not necessarily with this bylaw.
Well, you know, another option too is uh. They could get the increased height. So right now we're incentivizing the mixed use with the increased height. So we could also incentivize open space with the increased height.
Yeah, so maybe if it comes down to it. I mean, I don't know if it will or won't, but it's a good question, Bill. And if it does come down to it, maybe we still get open space without dinging our. How much we need to come up to the table.
Doesn't the waiver sort of cover that with under site design if we could, if we need to waive it? Or does that not cover that?
You can waive anything in this bylaw.
Okay, so maybe if it comes to if it, but wait, we need to come to the table with the developable land, and if open space cuts into that. Does that, that might ding us.
You know, I could also, you know, i- if you guys decide to go with the Southwest. Uh, connector. Collector, connector, then I can do that analysis. And then I'll be able to tell because there is some amount of wetlands on that property. Um, so then we could see whether you can get to the forty percent, and if you can't. Then we could decrease that down to maybe thirty-five percent or thirty, or whatever amount is appropriate. I, I think the important thing is we want to make sure that we get some amenities, and I know like with the Tramel Crow. They intend to provide amenities. So a lot of places provide dog parks. And, you know, grill areas and just open space areas, so that's part of their. Um, their goal anyway. I just wanted to make sure that we get a little bit of open space. With every single development project.
So did you tell us if we picked a downtown property that we're eligible for downtown grants? Like, was that a carrot for us? I can't recall.
Yes, yes. So there is money that goes along with this MBTA zoning. So. Um, we will have. The benefit. Of uh, like, for example. I'll tell you a perfect example. I was able to get a Mass Works Grant for my Phase Two Downtown Revitalization Project. Of one point two million dollars. Because the planning board approved a forty-seven unit. Um, garden-style apartment building one block over. And so in order to be really eligible for a Mass Works Grant. You need to have a development partner. So you need to have like a private. Partner. You need to demonstrate that somebody is interested in investing in your downtown. In order to, to get that money. So that was huge, because the total cost of the project was like two point five million, so they paid almost half.
So if we picked option one that had the Avalon and Ball Field, we would not be eligible for those.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't be able to get a mass development grant now, because I don't have a development partner.
But Hudson Street is close enough, it would count.
Yes, because actually on my Phase Two. Downtown Revitalization Project, it was one. One and a half block setback from the scope of work for Phase Two. So the way I justified it is I said that those people who live in that development complex. Are gonna be walking to the town hall. They're gonna be walking to the library. They're gonna be walking to uh, you know, these churches that are, were within the scope of the Phase Two project. And there were a number of like commercial uses as well. And the senior center.
Um, okay, so in terms of the bylaw itself, I, I think we had a couple of. Minor tweaks, it sounded like, real big. Any, anything else you want to address about this?
No, you've done a lot of work, Lori. Thank you. It's been amazing.
I'm glad you like it. It was a lot of work, but it was fun, uh. Right, and you know, I was uh, I was trying to think of things that. Would uh, appeal to you folks and also blend with the downtown revitalization plan. Uh, that's been in Samson's finishing, so.
I think it's very, very carefully thought out, so I appreciate it.
I mean, it's not long enough. We usually like, like a nice ten page bylaw.
Don't, A- Amy can add, I'm sure.
I'm sure we'll be adding over the next few years, so.
Okay, so uh, Amy, of course, is gonna send me her changes. Um, so maybe if, if you folks can think of something over the next couple of weeks. Um, that you want me to modify, I'd be happy to incorporate those. And then we do actually, believe it or not, have two applications for our next meeting. On December fifth, so one of which is the Dog Park Project. Um, and then the other one is a co-location. Uh, for a kind of abandoned wireless facility on Ball Street. So we've got those two issues as well as a um. A modification of the phasing plan for two hundred Bartlett Street. On our agenda for the next meeting. So I don't know if you want me to. Put bylaw discussion on that agenda or whether.
Case, we don't get to it, but at least it's there. And then, I mean, I think. I don't know if we've settled on the exact properties here. It sounds like we're debating back and forth, but. Maybe that's something we revisit. Or do we, have we heard anything from Harvey, like any buzz of? Anything going on there that they'd be interested in anything, or we have no idea?
Um, well, they're located in Texas. So uh, the property owners, so. I have not spoken directly to them. So I did speak with the Harvey. Uh, family who previously owned the property. And sold it to this outfit in Texas. And um. They were going to, so it was to invite them to come to our community outreach meetings for the downtown revitalization. And I know he came to one, so I have his contacted information, but he's kind of conduit. So I haven't actually spoken to uh, the property owners themselves, so. Yeah, right, right now I don't have definitive interest.
Okay. All right. Um, yeah, so we may as well put it on the agenda just in case. And by the way, um, I got an email earlier, two hundred. Thought they were on the agenda tonight for some reason. I don't know what happened. Did something happen there?
Yeah, that's the one that's gonna be on December fifth. So they reached out to me in early October. And then we had a, a couple of meeting cancellations and their um. Their appointment got lost on one of the canceled agendas. Uh, and didn't get conveyed into the new agenda, so that was an oversight on, on our part.
Okay, all right, they seemed upset.
Yeah. Lori, did you send us this in uh, email format?
I did. I think I sent it to you a week ago Tuesday. But I'd be happy to resend it to you.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I got that piece of it. I mean.
Okay, should we move on to the other bylaws?
Okay.
Does anyone need a quick break? Do we want a quick? Bio, we're good? Does anyone need a quick break? Do we want a quick bio? We're good, okay.
Uh, so do you want to go on to the groundwater? Okay, just bear with me. So I did ask, I did sit down with Fred. Uh, to talk about the changes to groundwater. And he did ask me to make some wording changes, which I did. Um, and I emailed those to him, but he did not yet send me his letter saying he is, he's good with it. So he will be in. Tomorrow. So I'm hoping to, to pry that from him tomorrow. Okay, so now I'm going to share my screen again. And I noticed when I uh, through Fred. Earlier today. That some of my narratives. Uh, did not have complete sentences, so I'm sorry about that. I thought I finished my uh, rationale, but I clearly did not, so. Uh, bring that. Uh, so the first one has to do with the rezoning of the industrial district. Uh, Southwest Connector. Um, so we talked about this before. I'm sorry about the dog. Um, so I haven't yet prepared uh, that map. Um, so that is the entire industrial district. Uh, this proposal would rezone it from industry. To highway business. So this is uh, the Southwest cutoff area only. I did reach out to uh, the owner of the gravel pit. Um, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to connect yet. I just wanted to give him the heads up. And uh, get his take on whether this will be a welcome change or whether it won't.
Hmm. And the commercial self-storage, so we just did that one a couple of years ago, so.
Yeah, so they would be grandfathered. That is not currently in allowed use in the highway business district. So those are the only two uses. That would be problematic. Uh, they would be grandfathered.
My only question is like, a lot of towns have a lot of different districts and. In a way, I was almost, I like, I think highway is really good because it includes almost everything that we'd want. But it also adds adult uses. So I was wondering if we should call it like the Route twenty district and. Have it be the highway district, but maybe take out a couple of things we might not want. Like, I don't know if I want to promote like. Then Northborough Crossing might get an adult toy store or something. You know, that's my concern, like. And also it doesn't allow like kennels, not that we want a kennel there, but maybe there's a spot there where someone wants to open up a big. Doggy daycare play area and it's not near any houses, so it might be okay, like. Maybe we want to just do a Route twenty district, which is similar to the highway district, but. Doesn't include adult uses. That was one of my thoughts. You just never know. Other than that, most of the um, uses seemed fine, but I think originally when they picked the adult district, they put it up on Route nine. And this would be bringing it further down Route twenty.
So right now it's a special permit by the ZBA.
Hmm. But I mean, that would open it up to all the stores up at Northborough Crossing and stuff.
Yeah.
I just, I think it would be easier to have it not be permitted. Unless somebody wants them.
I, I'm open to, to that. Uh, maybe Amy, you could send me the uses you'd like to include.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would, and everybody can go through the uses. I went through them side by side and I thought, well, maybe kennel could be a yes and.
Start flipping the uses in highway business?
Just that, well, no, highway business would still stay highway business, but this would just be a new, a new zone. And it could include everything that was in the commercial overlay district that was originally plopped on Northborough Crossing.
Can we just extend the overlay to cover this area?
Well, then you still have the underlying uses, which is what we were trying to solve by changing the zoning.
Yeah, so the major commercial overlay is already the entire industrial district. So all, all of those uses are currently allowed. Um, but it was, it was my understanding that uh. Particularly concerns about what the gravel pit will ultimately be and whether that's going to be a warehouse and distribution use. So uh, eliminating that is an option.
Could you just scoot up a little bit? I can't see the very top of the bylaw there. I don't know if I zoomed in. Oh, there we go, okay.
So this would change the area from industrial to commercial.
So if this area is rezoned, then what I was envisioning is to. Delete the major commercial district, overlay district, because it would be redundant.
I see. I mean. Can we just flip that use to a no?
I think you have to have it somewhere, don't you, Lori?
You do.
So. That wouldn't be allowed because then it would put it as a no on the highway business.
Yeah, I think it makes sense just to create a new one.
There are a lot of towns that have like, like having industrial one, two, and three, you can have commercial one, two, and three. It'd be just.
Well, we talked, I don't want to help. I don't want to complicate it, but we talked about the possibility of um. Hospitality overlay. Maybe that's too limited in scope.
Well, it can't be an overlay.
Oh, because it already has an overlay?
No, because um, we're trying to change it from industrial. And if you do an overlay, you still have the underlying.
Oh, you're right, yep, yep, yep.
But what if we add hospitality to the new one?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. I was just thinking, yeah, that's what, that's.
Yeah, I think the, the highway business already allows a whole host of hospitality uses.
Right.
So it's pretty much the zoning that North Borough Crossing has.
Okay, so does that work?
You call it the Southwest cutoff district or whatever Lori wants to call it. Whatever we decide, you know, we have. Business South, Highway Business, this would be like. Southwest cutoff business.
Or Highway Business East, is that east?
Actually, Highway Business East.
Isn't that actually West?
West or south?
Yeah, either.
Highway Business is Southwest.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Which would make sense for Southwest cutoff. So maybe how business Southwest? And we'd know where it was.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
And just take out. Take out the adult uses and then if anybody wants to flip anything else to a yes.
Well, it's basically just a North Borough Crossing uses, same, same uses applied, right? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah. We can go down and check and see if there's anything else.
Other car dealership. Um. Yeah, well, why don't, why don't uh, Amy, you send, send me what? You think, and then I'll, I'll write it up and then we can discuss it next time. Okay, so then.
We added brew pub. Do we add breweries too? Yeah, we added breweries, right? That passed. I just don't have the right book. So that's probably not in the North Borough Crossing um, version because they didn't exist at the time that was written, so. Like things like.
Brewery is a prohibited use in highway business.
Oh.
You can add it because there are some big parcels there. So everybody should look down and see what you think should be added. Highway Business Southwest. I'm already using it. I think it's good.
Okay, let's uh, move on to groundwater. Um. Okay, so what I'm trying to do. Is right now, uh, we have a whole host of. Commercial uses that are required to go to um, the ZBA for a special permit. That are equivalently non-disruptive to groundwater. As the uses that were currently. Uh, exempted from the special permit requirement. So right now, retail shopping, business or professional office are exempted from getting the special permit. In the um. Area three. But personal service is not exempted. So they have to come. So if you're doing, you know. A spa or a hair salon. Uh, you have to come to uh, the ZBA. And uh, all of these uses get approved without any issue. Uh, so it's. Kind of uh. Kind of nutty in my mind that they have to get a special permit. Because there really is no danger, in my opinion. From a cardboard box full of uh, bottles of shampoo that are made of plastic.
So for you, could we just change them to buy right uses rather?
That's, that's what I'm doing.
No, but rather than tinker with the groundwater bylaw, just you change them in the use table to yes, instead of by ZBA.
Yep, so that's what this bylaw would do.
I know, but this looks like it's, it tinkers with the groundwater. I'm saying like, don't tinker with the groundwater, just put yeses in the use table.
Oh. Okay, let me look at my zoning bylaw.
I think Lori's talking, this is getting rid of the special permit for groundwater. Not, not the use.
But if it's by, oh, yes.
So I'm converting them all to buy right uses.
Yeah. We, we, we have some uses that in the use tables are allowed by right. However, if they're in a groundwater three, they still have to get a special permit for the use in a groundwater district.
I'm with you. Okay, thanks.
And that's what Lori was trying to get rid of.
But what concerns me with this is um, sure, it's Business West, Business East and Downtown Business. But also Business South is included and there's auto repair businesses. There are other things in Business South that. Now would be.
So those would still be required to get a special permit. So it's only, it's only the commercial uses that do not involve. As accessory uses, the manufacturer, storage, application, transportation, or disposal of toxic or hazardous materials. So if you're talking about a service station, a gas station, um, anything like that. Then they would still, actually, they'd be a prohibited use. Um, or they would have to get a special permit. So under number five, so if you're in your red zoning book on page seven sixty-seven. So under number five, uh, there's another bullet that says commercial or industrial activities which involve. As accessory uses these. Um, they would still require a special permit. So I'm trying to segregate those uses away from the gentle commercial uses. That are of similar impact as retail shopping and professional office.
Oh, I guess what I did is I jumped to the second article where you crossed everything out and there's nothing left.
Well, that's because I moved all that stuff. Over into the buy right. So the real danger to groundwater is non-point source pollution. So it's not from the chemicals themselves, like at a salon, in my opinion. So it's not from the shampoo or the hand lotion or the conditioner. That's not going to destroy the groundwater. But what could possibly impact the, the groundwater is um, impervious cover. And uh, so you get a parking lot and then cars are leaking. Oil and gasoline and antifreeze. And then when it rains, it's going into the stormwater system and ultimately going into the groundwater. So we're concerned about that. We're also concerned about septic systems. So um, you, you would still have to demonstrate compliance with the special permit criteria. Um, but instead of going through the extra step of going to the ZBA. You're demonstrating it to the municipal staff. So you're providing proof to the building inspector. Um, so there's the language. At the, the last sentence. Such determination to be made by the building department in conjunction with other relevant town staff. So what Bob is going to do is, uh, so this is a brand new development. So this is a brand new um. You know, strip mall. So what they're going to do is they're going to submit. Um, well, of course, they're already going to go to you for site plan approval. Um, but then they're going to demonstrate compliance with these requirements. That they would have to demonstrate to the ZBA. But now they're going to demonstrate them to the staff. So that's going to be Bob. In conjunction with the DPW. And if it has to do with the septic system, it's going to be the health agent. So they still have all, the town still has all of the power. That it currently does as a special permit use. But now it's a buy right use. So if they don't demonstrate compliance with all of this. They, then they are unable to get a building permit.
Um, okay, so for me, I guess, like, what I'm trying to figure out the purpose of this, and I go to the rationale. I, I have to say, I think this is completely the opposite of what's true, that, that this. We're doing this because it's otherwise a huge impediment to the type of medium to high density development desired by North Borough residents. It should be followed by said nobody ever. Like, we literally never get, like, that's not the feedback we've gotten for the past six years. No North, we don't, there's maybe five residents I can think of that want high density housing. I, to go up to town meeting with that rationale is going to. Be laughed right out of the auditorium. That is not.
Okay, so the first one. Uh, so here we go. So right now, our zoning bylaw, so we're on the commercial one. We're not on the multifamily one yet. So on the commercial one. We currently have, our underlying zoning has minimum lot size of four thousand square feet.
Seven zero seven zero one zero, that's the rationale for that one.
Yeah, it's under the first one.
It's under the first.
On page two. In the rationale.
Don't, don't look at the rationale. If you can look at the, the bylaw, the bylaw itself.
Okay.
So the bylaw itself. So this, um, if you look at area three, area three and cover, covers the, almost the entire downtown area. So right now, if you look at the underlying zoning, downtown business. Allows you to build at four thousand square foot minimum lot sizes. But you can't ever do that because of this bylaw. So this bylaw says that the minimum lot size isn't four thousand square feet, it's twenty thousand square feet. And the same is true for the um, downtown neighborhood district. So in that district, the minimum lot size. Is uh, let me look. I think it's ten thousand square feet. But you can't ever get to ten thousand square feet for business. Downtown neighborhood is ten thousand square feet. The MSR district, the minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet. But all of these minimum lot sizes are fake because of this. Because of this. Groundwater protection overlay district, which requires you to have a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. So that's why you have the sprawling downtown that you currently have. Those minimum lot sizes are gigantic for a downtown area.
Where? Like, what's an example of what you view as a sprawling area? Because I'm trying to think of like what's sprawling downtown and there there's. Uh is there an example of what's sprawling down there?
So what I consider sprawling is pretty much where you have um. You don't have buildings budding each other. You have driveways in between buildings and parking lots.
So are we talking like the coffee shop and the bank? Because that doesn't seem like a sprawling, like it's not like we have.
I'm talking about the white building and the bank. So the white building that is uh currently unoccupied. There's gonna be a um. A dentist office, I believe, or a chiropractor office. And then the the Bank of America building. In my opinion, that's very sprawling, that's not typical of the downtown, huh?
Is the coffee shop in between that?
On the other side of that.
Well, I'm on the wrong side, then. I guess I'm not picturing the same thing.
That was probably because a lot sizes were made so small, like. If someone bought two lots, they could have built one building because there's no setbacks. Like, but I don't think it had to do with groundwater as much as it had to do with our lot sizes. And people were buying all these random lots. We had so many different winners.
So right now in Milbury's downtown district. The um so it's a very compact downtown. There's no minimum lot size, no front setback, no side setback and no rear setback. You can cover the entirety of a parcel with parking. And then you can rely on the on street parking for your parking requirement as well as municipal parking lot. So if the idea is to create a more classic downtown. Then. That's what you want, you want really small minimum lot sizes and you don't want setback requirements. Because you want to, those buildings to be able to get as close as possible to each other. So you don't have these big gaps. So the big gaps are what's uninteresting to pedestrians. Pedestrians don't like walking across driveways and parking lots.
Okay, so say we, say we did something and now we have that example of the White House and the bank. Could some, what could even be, nothing could even be jammed in there, we'd still have that because it's not like. There's a lot there to jam in now, it's still the same problem.
No, if if you don't have a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. Then you could, you could build those buildings adjacent to each other, so you demolish the Bank of America building, you could build a new building. And um you know, you could build possibly two buildings and butt them up against each other. So you could have like a. Building that reaches a across all of that frontage. So say your frontage, you know, I'm gonna pull it out of the air, say your frontage is seventy five feet wide. You could do a seventy five foot wide building.
But you mentioned like if there were no setbacks, no nothing, you could cover the entire parcel with parking. Nobody here would want that. Like, I think we want trees and.
So we have in our parking requirements. Um you know, you have the requirement to provide open space. Um so you know, you have to provide landscaping as part of off street parking. And right now we have a six foot setback, front yard setback in this district, so that's also a landscaped area. But in your downtown, typically what you see is you have pocket parks. But you don't have, I mean, if you have large expanses of open space on every single parcel. Then you have a sprawly downtown, you don't have a compact downtown. So if you look at Hudson. A lot of those storefronts consist of building. And that's it. Or building and there might be some off street parking.
Well, I think the immediate issue we have is we don't have any, you know, other parking than the parking lots around the buildings. You know, Hudson, you do have additional parking and you've got street parking, we don't have any of that in Northborough, so then what do you do?
So so the idea is to to do parking differently, so. Um I know you folks haven't seen the downtown revitalization report because we've been working on these drafts. Um but in that report, there are recommendations to create municipal parking, so that would alleviate. The need for every single property owner to do off street parking. And then there's also a desire to maybe make some of the streets one way so that you can do on street parking, not on Route twenty. But on some of these little side streets. So uh that way. We can kinda get away from the current configuration where everybody needs to have. Their own parking lot and then you can never get from one parking lot to the other. So I, that you know, that's one of the. Disincentives to the current downtown, so if I park at C V S. Well, I'm not gonna leave my car there and then cross Route twenty to go to the coffee shop. Because I'm gonna be afraid that C V S is gonna tow my car. So. Now I've just, well, I I had to go to C V S. Well, instead of going to that cute little coffee shop across the street, I'm gonna get my car and I'm gonna go to Dunkin' Donuts and I'm gonna go through their drive through. So the current configuration of the parking lots. Is dissuading people from walking between uses. So a municipal parking lot would help alleviate that because you can park your car there. You feel feel safe that you're not gonna be ticketed or towed. And then you can walk between multiple uses.
The one concern I have, so that makes sense, um the one concern, like when we talk about Hudson, they have like a standard. Building size, like it's all like the same building structure size, like it's easy to be side by side, it's all uniform and. Similar facade, like we, my fear is that we're just gonna have a hodgepodge, without demolishing what's there and starting over. We're gonna have a hodgepodge of buildings, like we're just jamming in because we don't have that same uniform. Like when we talk about that compact downtown, we don't even have the the bones for it there with that uniform building kinda setup.
Uh when you're a planner, you work in decades and you know, change takes decades. And so there's going to be a transition period where you are going to have a hodgepodge. So you know, right now we have a hodgepodge.
We do.
You know, you have the historic uh buildings that are sitting on the sidewalk edge. And then you have like the the mini mart that is not, you know, it's setback quite a distance and you have the parking in front. And then you have the Bank of America, uh which is like an island of of building within a sea of parking. So that's, that's where we are currently, but in order to. Get what you want fifty years from now, you gotta start somewhere.
I don't know if the groundwater by law is the first place, um I'm concerned, I'd wanna look into it more because. We wanna protect our groundwater.
So right now, the downtown area is currently one hundred percent sewered and on public water. So um you know, you don't have to worry about septic systems. Um there is gonna be a problem. With a a portion of the multifamily, if you end up putting at the M B T A here because. You may have a portion of the properties that are within the groundwater overlay and then. You're not gonna be able to adhere to the minimum lot size requirement because of that. Um but you know, i- it's food for thought, so like I said, the the biggest danger is. Non point source pollution. And this ties. The not, uh this takes care of the non point source pollution by still requiring compliance with those standards. So right now, the staff is really doing all of the um. The investigation for these uses anyway. And uh reporting, so right now. You know, the D P W, so the Assistant D P W Director is going through all of those M S uh D S sheets. On shampoos and uh creams, face creams and. Um you know, hand lotions. And providing letters to the Z B A that says, yeah, there's no risk here. So this would just stop. Uh these, these uh little spas from having to go through the extra step. Of going to the Z B A, holding a public hearing, when there really is no risk, these are mostly. Businesses that are going into existing storefronts. So you know, we're not changing impervious surface or anything.
Amy, you have something there?
Yeah, to me, this is like all commercial, not just downtown, so what if? If you didn't have to have the twenty thousand, it seems like you're taking out the twenty thousand square feet in area lot size. What if they don't have to meet twenty thousand square feet in lot size if they're on sewer? So then if you're not on sewer, then you still have to follow the groundwater by law. But if you're on sewer. Then you don't have to meet the twenty thousand square feet.
Aren't they, didn't you say they're all on sewer?
So the only.
This includes all districts.
So the only districts that have less than twenty thousand square square feet. Are the general residential districts, the M S R districts, the downtown neighborhood and the downtown business. So three of those districts are in the downtown. So the only, the only one other one is the general residence. And let me look.
So you're saying down in Business West, there's no lot size smaller than twenty thousand square feet, I mean.
Twenty thousand square feet.
I have no idea, yeah.
So when we're talking about commercial. The minimum lot sizes are already twenty thousand square feet in all of those districts, so highway business is forty thousand, industry is sixty thousand. Business South is forty. So it's really only the downtown business that we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing a copy of the downtown revitalization plan. As part as we're, if we're saying that's our logic, I I'd like to at least see a copy of it.
Our meeting is on Thursday, so hopefully on Thursday. Uh the M P I C will tell me that it's good for prime time. And that we can release it. So I I can't release it until that point.
That's fine.
I haven't read it until tomorrow, too much for tonight.
I know.
I haven't, I haven't read the latest one yet either. Okay, so now moving right along, so this uh. You know, probably what I would do in the article is combine these two together because they hinge upon each other. Um so if one gets approved. Then this becomes contradictory and vice versa, so. Uh that will become one by law, so this one here. So I'm interested in doing the same thing for two family and multifamily and the reason. Is um. Well, the rationale on this one is is uh pretty much complete. So currently, two family and multifamily dwellings are only allowed by special permit. Subject to a mandatory increase in the minimum lot size to twenty thousand square feet. So we're already there with the twenty thousand square feet. So the minimum lot size for two family dwellings. Uh varies from twenty to thirty, so we're compliant already. So there's no impact whatsoever by eliminating the mandatory upsize. Um so it also has no impact whatsoever on multifamily dwellings. Permitted within Business West because the minimum lot size is already twenty thousand square feet. So it would impact multifamily dwell dwellings in the downtown neighborhood district and the downtown business districts. As the minimum lot sizes are ten thousand and four thousand square feet. So this is where we're talking about. Um the fact that the groundwater protection overlay district. Isn't allowing us to get to the minimum lot sizes. That are in the underlying zoning.
I mean, I have the same problem here, I I have never been to a meeting where residents had an outcry, in fact, we went to that thing where we put stickers. There was a giant pile of housing stickers that nobody touched because. Th- this is not what residents are asking for, and there's no way I'm going to town meeting and saying our logic is because you guys want. Uh increased residential density, you've been asking for and it's part of the vision, I have never heard that as part of what people want, I I mean. I'm not a fan of either one of these, but I'm not gonna. It's up to the whole board, but I just think that's completely against what we've heard over, for as long as I've been listening at these meetings and. Uh uh I'm I'm surprised to see it be stated that that residents want this.
I agree. Revitalization summary, the um revitaliz downtown.
Yeah, maybe I'll wait, I'll have an open mind until I'll read this plan and maybe have a more open mind, but right now, when I look at that logic, there is no way in the world I'm presenting this at town meeting.
When you read the plan, the beginning talks about the downtown, like the um. Community and it says what people want in restaurants and shops. But then in the middle, it goes on to say that the consultants say to get the restaurants and shops, you have to. Um have high density, which is why what they keep saying over and over again, but they never said. That the people, I mean, I don't think the people ever wanted it.
And and again, economic development, I don't know, like the towns that I see make it work. I literally have an, uh someone on staff or a committee or something dedicated to economic development, I I don't think you magically get business because you put. High density housing, we're not, we're jumping to a a foregone conclusion that I don't think is valid.
Oh, what the businesses do is they do, they do a market analysis. So what they're doing is they're trying to see if there's a demand. That their business is gonna be successful. So right now we have a downtown that has a number of commercial vacancies in it. And we don't have new developments coming in, and so. Uh there's a reason for that.
Right, but who's doing the outreach, who's doing recruiting, who's doing the, sorry, Millie, I cut you off.
Oh, sorry, no, I'm on mute. Now I'm on mute. I mean, I I think there's a lot of issues with the downtown, I don't think it's just the residential. I think that it is, there's, there's, you know, there's traffic, there's no parking, there's nowhere to go. There's no reason to go into downtown, so I think it's the cart before the horse, I do agree with you Lori in some ways that you do need people to go to these businesses. But looking at all the towns around us, they. You know, Hudson, Clinton, uh you know, I went through Grafton today. They, the businesses are there and they draw the people. I don't, I I think it's, it's a little bit of that. You've gotta have a reason for people to wanna live in our town versus living in Hudson, Clinton, Grafton, or any of the more affordable towns. We're not that affordable.
So, but essentially right now, so if you have a lot that's four thousand square feet. Which is the underlying zoning district. Then you have an unbuiltable lot. Because you don't have twenty thousand square feet of area. So this is the problem because you're in area three. So the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet, you only have four thousand square feet, so you're compliant with the underlying district but not. Overlay, so then they have to go to the Z B A to get a to. A dimension variance because they don't eat the minimum lot size requirements, so there are a number of parcels. In the downtown. That are not compliant with the twenty thousand square feet, but they are compliant with the underlying zoning.
But probably not G R and M S R, it wouldn't be as needed because those are all built out, like I don't think there's any open space left in. G R and M S R to even build.
That's what I was wondering, is what, what are the parcels? Just out of curiosity.
So what I'm talking about mostly is the downtown business and the downtown neighborhood. So probably your own part, I mean, you own a couple of parcels.
Yeah.
Are they twenty thousand square feet?
Depends on, on which ones, yeah. I don't, I don't know that I, I don't believe. No, I'm not sure they are.
So you're gonna have an issue.
Unless I combine them.
I mean, Carrie, to, to your point, you're right that we haven't heard anything about, you know, getting high-density housing in here, but what we have heard is to streamline the process. Right? We, we, we've heard that time and time again. From what Lori's saying, if we take out the, the rationale of the housing, right? We're trying to streamline the process by aligning what the groundwater district overlay says to what the zoning says. If the zoning says four, four thousand, why, why have a overlay district that says twenty? Right? So we're sort of lining things up so that somebody with a four thousand square foot area or, or lot can actually build here and not have to go through all sorts of different hoops.
The reason was to protect the groundwater. So I'd like to see
You're not protecting the groundwater because you're on public water and public sewer anyway.
Right.
So why was twenty thousand picked originally?
No, what was the answer to that? Did we get an answer to that? Why they picked that?
Fred must know he was on it from the beginning, if you can ask him tomorrow.
No, actually, this bylaw was adopted before his arrival. I believe it was in, uh, the nineteen seventies it was adopted. So they adopted it. They adopted it before, before the state adopted Zone One and Zone Two for wellhead protection. So if you go by the state requirements, there's zero protection for area three properties. So the town of Northborough it has a greater level of protection than the state. Um, which is fine. However, and you know, I applaud it when it comes to non-point source pollution. So that's a significant problem for a lot of our waterways. But in this particular case where the districts that you are talking about, the commercial properties that are negatively impacted are all on public water and public sewer. So generally you want larger lot, lot, a lot sizes when you're talking about septic systems. So that is probably why they chose the twenty thousand square feet because of septic systems. But here we have no septic systems. And we have a, a very, uh, good comprehensive stormwater management bylaw that requires them to cleanse and infiltrate any sort of runoff from roofs as well as from parking lots. So we're already addressing that with, uh, projects that are an acre or greater in size. And then this bylaw would also require it on smaller parcels that aren't triggered by that stormwater management bylaw. So it, it requires uh, the limitation, the, the net runoff. So it requires the infiltration of stormwater. It minimizes, um, it sets limits on septic systems. So right now, the ZBA is enforcing that. The only difference here is now it'd be staff is enforcing the same exact requirement. And honestly, the staff is the one that's enforcing it today, too.
It was Fred though, and now Fred's gone. So does, who does it now?
It's the Assistant DPW Director, Megan Condon, who does it.
And if you did want to, you, if you, so you can get a dimensional variance if you need one. If you, if there, the alternate way around this is a dimensional variance.
It's a dimensional variance, but it's a super majority vote, which is really hard to get. So it's four out of five yes in order to get that dimensional
Well, if they're voting against it, then there's, I mean, I'd wonder why if they're, if the way of that, if we can't get a super majority, then there's gotta be a reason for it. So I guess that's the, that's the stop. I hate to open it up with a universal level when there is a way to do it. And maybe we see, like, we keep an eye on what is coming through for those dimensional variances. What are people trying to do? And if we see there's a ton of them, then maybe we say this has, we need it at a universal level. But if it's a random one and we at least have the ZBA to say, okay, this actually doesn't work, works, whatever, then
But in the meantime, the developer has moved on to a different town.
I mean, does that
You know, a lot, a lot of developers aren't interested if they have to get a dimensional variance. Some may, you know, especially if they're close. So maybe they have, you know, fifteen thousand square feet and they need the twenty thousand, so they're gonna go. But if they have four thousand square feet, there are many that are gonna go to the ZBA and ask for sixteen thousand square foot dimensional variance. So then the lot just sits undeveloped.
Do we have any instances of that right now where there's an undeveloped lot that we lost the chance because of a dimensional variance?
Uh, we had one that was super close. Um, I, it passed by the skin of its teeth, four in favor, one opposed. Um, that was a, an existing Victorian, um, that was, is going to be expanded. So it's an office building that, uh, has been vacant. So it's going to be expanded and used for multifamily. Um, but that, that almost failed.
Lori, I've heard things that it probably should have failed because now they're gonna have to push everything from the parking lot into the lotlands when they plus snow. There wasn't enough space on the lot.
There, there's nothing going in the wetlands. That was by the Conservation Commission, the NDEP.
That's seventy-eight West Main Street.
Okay, any other comments on these? We probably won't resolve this one tonight, but
Just curious, Lori, are you saying that all the businesses in, uh, downtown business are on town water and town septic?
Town sewer, that's my understanding.
Because I, I do believe the WCD garage just got hooked up. To
Yeah, I mean, they, they have the water, they have the water in the sewer main in front of their buildings. So if they haven't hooked up, they certainly can hook up.
Right, but there's a, they, they didn't hook up, so they weren't. So they have, so some of the businesses have the option to, but they haven't hooked up. Is that correct?
Say, I can't say. Uh, what I can tell you is that the extent of water and sewer thoroughly goes along. So, you know, I, I can see on the GIS the extent of the water and sewer service. So I can tell you that there's water main and sewer main in front of all of the properties. I can't see whether there are actual services going to every single property. But, um, they are eligible for water and sewer, and that's typically, uh, something that if there's a development proposal, they demonstrate whether they have water or sewer. Part of that development package.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking of the buildings that are there, some of the, the older businesses and older buildings. I don't think are hooked up. I, if I understand correctly, there's a, a pretty good size fee to it.
Okay, well, that's a good distinction anyway. All right, why don't we keep it moving? We probably won't solve this one tonight, but we can keep going.
All right. Uh, so then the last one is, uh, Amy's request to expand the outdoor lighting uh, site design standard to include full cutoff dark sky compliance.
It was mainly because we added to all the, um, decisions anyways. So if we put in the bylaw, then we don't have to, I'm assuming we won't have to put in on a condition as a condition on every single application. And it sounds like most of the developers, they do dark sky compliant anyways.
The only question I have, the only question I have on this one is, does this, um, apply to residential as well or just commercial? Like which districts are we talking about?
It's anybody who is triggered by site plan review.
Okay.
Which wouldn't be a single-family house.
Right, yep.
Any comments on this one? We ask for it usually anyway. Is this one of those ones where just making a bylaw that we ask for all the time anyway?
Yeah, I'm not sure that, that, I see the necessity.
Well, in this case, now we don't have to ask for it. It's just automatic.
Now they just do it. And supposedly they all do it now anyways.
So instead of us having to condition it, it's just a foregone conclusion. So if there's one day that we're not all here remembering to do it, it's already taken care of.
You got it.
I had a question, um, I had once, I think Lori, we had mentioned that, I think you had said in Milbury, they have no metal buildings along Main Street.
And Uh, so that actually is in our industrial district, um, in Milbury. There is a requirement that says that, uh, industrial buildings will not be metal. So they have to be masonry or, um, you know, something else. So it, it isn't in our, um, in our other districts. It's just in that one. We do also have a, a village district. So it's not the downtown. It's, uh, another Bremenville Village, which is a little mill village. Um, so that has under site plan review. It also has the design standard that, um, the buildings have to be made of brick or stone or wood or some sort of similar material.
I was wondering if we need a design standard for our, like, just Main Street. Um, I don't, it doesn't matter if the buildings are metal in the industrial. But I was wondering about Main Street. I think we talked about it two years ago or when you first started, but we never did it. We talked about it at design review. So then if somebody wanted to put a building up on Main Street, it would have to be something architecturally appropriate for like a Main Street versus industrial.
Yep.
Oh, you can put metal on Main Street now? I thought it was only industrial. You could use metal.
No, you can put it anywhere. I've been in some downtowns and they're like even really small towns and they're, um, they have buildings and the sides in the back are metal. They're like contractor yards, but then they make the front look really nice. So you would never know because it's on a Main Street.
Oh, so the front-facing portion cannot be metal.
Right, well, you could have it. Like I was saying, the whole building metal, but you could do it where just the front-facing wasn't metal. It depends on, or it would have to be the sides that aren't seen from the public. It's just, I just brought it up because we talked about it like two years ago and you just never know.
I personally like the not having metal in the Main Street area. I'm not a huge fan of the multiple different types of building material to create a facade and then have something completely different. I, I don't like that. That's almost some ways worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just the whole building not metal.
Yeah.
So would that just be, um, in addition, like this, it's the same article, but it would just be whatever? Do we actually have this where it's a easy?
No, I didn't write it yet. I didn't know if Lori had time or if she wanted me to do it. It would probably come under site design. Seven oh nine somewhere under materials.
Um, the, the bylaw is currently broken up into different districts in the design standards. Uh, so there are certain design standards that apply to like downtown business. Then, um, you know, the other business districts and then the industrial districts. So that's kind of the way it's broken down. Um, so that kind of would be would be easier to continue that. So like, for example, they have additional standards for business uses. So it applies to downtown business, Business East, Business West, Business South, downtown neighborhood. And then they have, um, you know, building placement and orientation, signs, lighting, et cetera. So then they have additional standards in the downtown neighborhood district. So would you be open to assigning it to a specific zoning district? So I could just plop it in there?
Sure. I mean, I would say definitely downtown business, probably Business East. Business West has a lot of metal buildings. I don't know. Well, I guess there are just a couple of them. There's actually only one I can think of off the top of my head, maybe two. But they would be grandfathered in anyways. So we could do downtown business, Business East, Business West. Do we do Business South? I mean, it's over by Walmart in Otis Street. Highway Business Southwest? If we wanted to be commercial, we probably should put in Highway Business Southwest. I don't know. I just wanted to bring it up because we, we talked about it. And the time that we'll notice it is when someone's already building one and we'll be like, oh my God, why did we not have that in our bylaw already? When you get a big metal building downtown. So I think it's better and then the developers know what we're looking for and it's not like, like we say, it's better that they know in advance.
Yep. So that's all I have for my bylaws. I don't know if, uh, Amy wants to share hers.
I have the sign bylaw. I don't know if you guys want me to go through it tonight or I can go through Lori's comments and Bob's comments when I go in front of design review first and then come back. Or I can go through them now. I actually didn't have time to read yours, Bob. I read Lori's. And then, um, yours came in later and I didn't read them before the meeting.
That's quite understandable. I, I didn't get a chance to look at them until today. And I actually finished writing my comments at about four fifteen, so I understand if you haven't gotten to them.
Is there anything that you wanted to highlight tonight that you wanted to like just before, you know, I, I maybe it makes sense to like go through a bulk of design review, but if you have any highlights or Bob, if you have any highlights or
Yeah, I've got a couple and it seems to be kind of recurring is that, um, you know, there was a comment about wanting signs over six square feet to go to, um, design review. And there was a timing of, um, uh, these applications going through time, time, uh, through, through design review. Um, that really messes up the thirty-day requirement for issuing the permit. Okay, um, and I think design review was looking for up to forty-five days. And that does not fly with the building permit application to the point that if it does go that route and it goes forty-five days, they can put that sign up however they want to put it up without a permit. Because if I don't deny it, they can put it up. The other thing is, is that, you know, the, the comment wanting to put signs through design review, I can understand that without, without a problem. The problem is, is that, um, design review is not relevant in any way unless there is a special permit from a special permit granting authority. There's no authority from the design review. It's completely advisory to an SPGA. And unless something is written into a special permit, I cannot enforce that provision. But, but, but those are in the comments and, and like I said, nobody's really had a chance to read them yet. But go through them. I, 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 I think I've, this is my first time editing on a PDF, so, um, I, I think I did it right, but just, um, feel free to take a look.
I, um, added it into design review too. Where I took it is I took it from other towns that have gone through downtown revitalizations and their signs go through design review. That have gone through downtown revitalizations and their signs go through design review. And, um, I took their wording. If it had to be thirty days, it could be thirty days. But. That's where I, that's where I took it from and I put it in there that so it would be up for discussion. But there are other towns when they, um. Are deciding to do a downtown revitalization. You want to have some cohesion and you want to have some sort of. Sign guidelines that you follow. And. They go through design review. So I added that. But for the rest of the sign by law, I don't have it open. I can. But I pretty much. The majority of the updates were what we did two years ago. Some of them are the same. And then. Let's see, I just wanna open. Do you want me to open and share it or?
I actually had a hard time going through the un. Marked up version. Um, just because it. Yeah.
Yeah. I can go through it really quickly and then we can go through it again at the next meeting if people have more. More questions or I can go through Lori's questions.
Cause I, I didn't even see the part where it says the thirty days.
Can everybody see what I just shared?
Yep.
Did it say signs?
Yep.
Okay. So the very first thing is just, I don't think you need the one there because it's one of the most visible. It's not a number. So that's just a housekeeping thing. Um. What I did with the banner sign is a lot of the towns have the banner sign and the flag. As two different, different definitions. A flag is a flag and a banner is usually something used to. Advertise. So I just separated the flag. Out of the banner because banners are temporary too. And people leave flags up all the time. So. There's now a flag definition, but the banner, which is defined under temporary. Is just the banner.
One of, one of the issues that I, that I found is that you, in the definition, you go on. To talk about flags of governmental jurisdiction properly displayed shall not be considered as banners. You, and you're talking about specific governmental jurisdictions. Uh, the POW flags. Are not under any federal jurisdiction. Um, and then my question is, what about, uh, other military or scouting flags? Um. Uh, flags of political subdivisions are federally first protected by the First Amendment. So if you want to fly a Biden flag or a Trump flag. That's a political sign. You can't do anything about it. Uh, my other question is that, um, many big companies that come to town, case in point, St. Obain. Um, they will put in a flag pole cluster of three poles. And usually what that is, is an American flag, a state flag and the company's flag. Uh, my question is, 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 do you want to eliminate all that as well?
No, flags are defined down under flag. The thing is with the flag being defined under a banner. Banners are only temporary for fifty six days right now. So the way it's worded.
Understood, but your flag definition is flawed because it does not address the POW. Uh, the scouts or, um, any kind of a corporate entity. I'd say if, um, Amazon wanted to put up a, a set of flag poles in a memorial setup. You know, they're going to put up a, a federal estate and an Amazon poll.
We can, um, fix the flag definition if you think it's missing something. I just took it out of South Bros. So.
That was in my comments.
Okay. I haven't read them yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if you can think of a way to update the flag definition that includes everything that you wanted. I, I'd be willing to add it. I was just taking the flag out of the banner because. It's now saying a flag is a banner that needs to be removed after fifty six days.
Right.
Right.
So I was trying to make it so it's, it's not an advertisement. It's actually a flag.
Right.
That is excluded and can stay up. That's, that's all I was trying to do. But if you see like words that aren't, that are missing, definitely add them. Cause I just took it from South Bro. And I don't know all the flags.
What about just taking the, you know, what you crossed off in number three and putting that down in the flag as the definition?
Yeah, I can do that.
Right. Cause that's basically what you're, what you're doing, right?
I had added the state and municipal flags, everything that's underlined. So I had added to it before and I think. This is from two years ago and then I think it got crossed out. So Bob, if you read all of this. And you think that's okay to move it down there, then I can do that. And that's a good idea, Bill. I just want to make sure it includes everything.
Um, I'm not going to write it tonight. I will probably.
Yep.
They propose suggestions probably within a week or so.
Yeah, sure. Yep. I'll definitely move it down. If, if it works. I added gasoline canopy sign because we have them and other towns have them and. And we didn't have it.
We, we've typically treated the, just for background. We've typically treated the gasoline canopy as wall signs. That contribute to the overall wall sign allowance. For that particular zoning district. Um, I also noticed that, uh, further down. Um, you proposed to not allow signs on. Uh, the gasoline canopies. So it's, you know, it's good to have a definition. Um, but I did notice that you proposed to, um. Remove the ability to have signs on, on the gas canopies.
Okay. I'll go down to that. I've done this so many times. A lot of these things are from two years ago. This roof sign thing, um, we had talked about two years ago. And I think Bob was in agreement then.
Which one?
Um, roof sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep.
And then these are all just renumbered. I think that was part of the roof, not the wall. So we had talked about that in twenty twenty two.
I've got a question on this one. You're talking about design review committee.
Yep.
Those signs for compliance within the Northwood Design Review Guidelines. Are there any design review guidelines specifically for signs?
No, I was gonna do it. That's part of my, I think it was in my email that we're gonna do. I've started it. Um, I shared it with design review a couple of times. We had some sign guidelines.
Keep, keep in mind again, um, design review is advisory and non-enforceable. Um, if somebody comes to me with suggestions, I can't force them to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned with that as well. Um, we've had issues in the past where. You know, there's been confusion about, you know, well, something was denied, but it wasn't by the planning board or the ZBA. So was it really denied or is it just them making a recommendation? Right? Um, I, I would be concerned about, you know. Design review saying, well, you have to do this, but not having any enforcement action ability behind it.
Well, the, the, the only way a, a design review item. Can become enforceable is when it becomes part of a special permit. Um, as I said before.
Right.
Um, that's about the only way, you know, mechanically that, that I could, you know, enforce what is wanted.
It also could be included in the, as a standard in the bylaws under seven oh nine O two O area. Which is design review standards. You, we could include signs.
And you're, then you're rewriting the general bylaws. Yeah.
You're just adding a bylaw. Just like we're doing now and all the other bylaws. But everybody, um, in the local area that goes through downtown revitalization has some sort of a. You know, some sort of cohesive, you know, they definitely want creativity, but it's more like saying. I'd have to bring up the guidelines because I did that and a different.
Let, let's put it this way. Personally, I would love to see every sign in town look a lot like what Millie did with the restaurant.
Yep.
That's probably the coolest sign in town. Okay.
Right.
But I can't make the mobile station do that. I, I just can't. It's, it's the mech, the mechanics are just not there.
Right. They don't have a freestanding sign though, do they?
Yep.
Oh, Lori, you have your hand up. But you're muted.
Yeah. W- one of my suggestions. So of course. There are signs that are, are going to be erected in all the various business and industrial districts. And even there are going to be freestanding signs that may be erected as part of, uh, s- single family and multifamily development. So. And there are a lot of signs that are approved every single year. I did a little, um, study. And the building department issues. An average of forty nine signs per year. Although it can be as many as seventy signs and as few as thirty signs. So. Um. That's a lot of signs. So if the goal is really to have uniformity of signs in the downtown. Then why not make? Signs in the downtown special permits. And then leave all the other signs alone. So, you know, other signs wouldn't have to go through design review like for. Amazon or FedEx or, um, you know, Dewey pile or, or the. North Borough Crossing. So none of those signs would go to, um. Design review except if they were brand new developments that are going through site plan review. And then that would be part of the. Development review package under site plan review. I think that's just more manageable is because that's really what you're trying to have control over is downtown signs, not all signs.
That's true.
Not even the creativity of the signs. It's like. But some are plastic, some are wood and, and, and a lot of towns now, they say you can't have the vinyl signs. If in the downtown. So. But, um, on your number two, it says forty nine signs over the last seven years. So I thought that was forty nine. Oh, it doesn't say that. So I was like seven per year. That's pretty manageable. It says forty nine signs and out, owning, and owning permits over the last seven years.
But that's the average. So I took all seven years and I found the average.
Per year.
So like I said, uh, in one year, I think it was as low as thirty two signs. But in another year, it was as high as sixty seven signs and that's a lot. And then you're gonna have to meet twice a month because if you have to comment. On, uh, the signs within fifteen days of submittal, that means you have to meet twice a month.
I can't imagine forty nine signs a year because I don't know where they're going, you know, but if they're over like ten square feet, then you know, it's not every little. Directory sign or.
A, a lot of the signs that come in. Are, um, when you have a large. Plaza and they have a freestanding sign with the tenant signs underneath. Um, each one of those requires a permit as well. Okay. So the, 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 the big chunk of them is literally. A vinyl or plastic insert, which is going to be one of my other questions is. You know, are you intending on excluding those signs as well?
No, and, and those are under six square feet, I would think, or under ten square feet.
Yeah, but your, um, your, um, does that general design guidelines prohibits vinyl and plastic signs. Throughout. That prohibition is in the wrong place.
All right. I'll, I haven't gotten there yet. So here's the design review and I, I planned on talking about it. Anything I have here was something for discussion with everybody.
Um, while, while you're scrolling, hang on, uh, at. At number eight, okay?
Yep.
Not performing sign that's removed or made in for longer than thirty days. It should be taken down immediately. You know, and usually that means I've got to get a hold of the property owner. Because the tenant by then is long gone. And the tenant has no interest in taking anything down. Um, if it's a freestanding lit sign, they also have to take a, um. Believe it or not, a demolition permit for the building department and a wiring permit to make sure the wiring is pulled back safely. Um. And then the other question I have, and I think we talked about this a couple of years ago. How do we quantify thirty five percent damage of a sign?
We'll have to think about it because like all the surrounding towns say thirty five percent.
I don't care what the other towns do, Amy. Okay. I need to know how I handle thirty five percent. Already in the sign by law, I have the authority to order a sign removed if I feel it's dangerous. Okay. And if I come across a sign that's been damaged, I will order it taken down and changed. You know, um, obviously it's probably going to be become, it, it's either because of decay. Or if somebody hit it or a storm came by. You know, if I drive by and I see a dangerous sign, I'll have to order to take it down.
Right. You also have, um. You have the right authority to take to anything with a good visually appearance.
Isn't that I just said?
Right. Well, no, you said dangerous or defective, but.
You know, I'm, 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 I'm not going to be the taste police.
Yeah. Well, what if you can't read it and half the letters are missing then?
Well, then it's, then it is, um, defective and damaged. It should be changed.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I, I, I cannot be the taste police.
I know you're not the taste police, but if it's falling apart.
If it's falling apart, it's a different story.
Okay. And then if somebody says something to me, I'll tell them to contact you.
Well, I have never had a complaint. From, uh, anybody around town. About a sign that's damaged and should be taken down. I've been here six years. I've never heard of one. So if you get them, please share them.
Okay. I will. All right. So this basic requirement. It actually already says this, but I was trying to say it in a clearer way, but. Signs should not display brand names, symbols, slogans, like the signs are supposed to be. Advertise, call attention and indicate the person occupying the premises. On which the sign is erected and maintained. Or the business transacted thereon. So if it's like Coca-Cola. If it's like the Coca-Cola company. They can. Advertise that they're Coca-Cola. But if you're a business. And I've read this in all the other towns, like your sign is supposed to say. Amy Poritsky Downtown Convenience Store. Like it shouldn't say Amy Poritsky Downtown Convenience Store, Coca-Cola. Red Bull, you know, it's not supposed to have brand name symbols.
O- o- okay. A- a- again, uh, we're, we're getting into how do I enforce something like this? Okay. Um, Brown's Appliance, if they want to hang a Maytag sign in their window. That won't be allowed. If, um, Bor said wants to put a sticker on, um, Lowe's Market. Not allowed. If, um, the jeweler wants to put up a Timex sign, it's not allowed.
That's what towns do in their downtown. They have. Us, their name and their address and they don't put stickers like. Scores Light and Budweiser all over the windows because then that's.
Uh, Paige's Jewelers has a very nice citizen watch. Sign in their window.
Just bringing it up. What I've read.
Well, um, my question is, am I going to write fines to these people?
No, but if you're doing the signs and. If you're gonna do the signs and facades downtown. I don't know. I think if there's a, a store with stickers all over it, then. I don't know. I, that's something I want to talk about at design review because this is more. What we talk about, but. If you want to get into it now, we can get into it now.
Are, are you, are you trying to distinguish between window signs versus signs like, uh? Because, um. Okay. So I could think of a liquor store actually. In my town. Where, uh. It says it's a free sign that they got from Budweiser. So there's, it's a rooftop sign. So Budweiser is on one portion of the sign and then they have the name of the liquor store. So there's that, but then there's also window signs, which I think is what Bob is talking about. When people put window signs, uh, up in their window. So those are kind of apples and oranges. So maybe the key here is to distinguish. Between window signs and. Sign signs.
I'm talking. If, if. Differential Corona gets a free lit sign out of neon that says, um. Um, Corona beer. Um Corona Beer. Or or Dos Equis or whatever. Okay, is that allowed under this under this requirement?
Under our current bylaw, we don't allow any window signs. Our current bylaw defines window signs. And then has them under temporary signs. Which says that they're to. I'll get there, it's under G. Temporary signs are the for special events. Fifty-six days.
Why they chose fifty-six days, I have no idea.
That was Michelle, I was on the board then when she picked it.
It remains a mystery.
And I don't remember why. I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to find it, it's under G. Sorry.
A- Amy, can I make a a quick suggestion?
Sure.
Um. One of like trying to make, and I think I've suggested this before, trying to make a lot of changes. So we're at town meeting, you're gonna have ten percent of the people that aren't gonna vote for whatever we ask, right? That's just normal, right? For every item you have in here, let's say you have another three percent that drop off and won't vote for it. So after ten items, now you're on, or actually after what, five items? Right, you're almost close to your thirty-three percent that you're not gonna get this passed. So. Doesn't it make more sense to try to concentrate on two or three things instead of trying to change the whole code at once and I mean? People have. We have trouble reading it sometimes.
Yeah.
Right, people have trouble reading this and if they don't understand it, they're not gonna vote for it.
Especially if we went through this, there aren't that many major changes once we get through what? You know Bob is saying?
This didn't get passed last time because there were too many things and people didn't understand it, I remember I was there.
I know, and it's because. Rick Leaf and John Campbell stood up and said, wait until after the master plan, we've gone through the master plan.
There were a lot of other.
Design review.
There were a lot of other people that had issues with one or two of these of each of these things. And that made them vote no for the whole thing.
Okay, well, which ones were they? I mean, it would take twenty years to like.
I mean, one of the ones was the in the the externally lit or internally lit. Right, I remember that was a big one.
Mm-hmm.
Right, we actually got that passed because we did it. By itself.
We've gone through. The master plan for two years now. And okay, I won't do the signs, but then we'll just be a free-for-all. And people complain about the downtown because there are stickers everywhere and vinyl everywhere.
If you wa- I'm just making a suggestion. You know, if you don't wanna do it, that's fine, but you know, you're you're you might be taking too big of a bite.
So maybe if we you go back to designer view, Amy, maybe it would be a better exercise to do that and like narrow down perhaps or flat star, like maybe not delete it because you wanna. Perhaps come back everything. But like if you star, what would really make a difference in downtown? They like our true problems that make it hard, maybe that at least star them would help.
On the one that I did without the markups, I made tables and that was one thing we talked about last year, so I've. Changed all this wording into tables. So if Lori and Bob wanna look at it and they want a table, we'll go with the table, if not, I'll take out the tables.
I I to be honest, I looked at the tables. And I really don't see much of an issue with them, I I I I think whether it's a language or if it's a. Table, I mean, you know, we all know the sign laws are confusing anyway, um. And whether it's a table or if it's, you know. Scripted out as is. Um. I think it's, I think it depends on the viewer.
You can do both. Oh, you don't want both, we're trying to save space.
Oh Lori, you have something there?
Yeah, my suggestion once again is if if the major concern is the downtown, just focus on the downtown. And so you know, maybe this year we're just gonna tackle those ones that are unique to the downtown. My concern about this bylaws, it applies to all the signs in the town. You know, regardless of where they're located and it's also going to be difficult to come up with sign guidelines. They cover all the the various types of uses. So you know. The the design guideline for a commercial use in the downtown district is gonna be very different than I would imagine. You know, the medical building on Route twenty accro- across from North Borough Crossing. And the same is true for North Borough Crossing, the character is very different. So it's not appropriate to have a five-foot tall. Uh sign with, you know, landscaping around it. For a uh commercial building that has thirty tenants in it, it's not possible. So um. You know, that would be my suggestion if if you're gonna take Bill's advice and kind of. Chop it up into more manageable bites is to concentrate on the downtown first.
Yeah, that's what I I was thinking of going to design review where it was. You, Bob, me and design review and then we could get through this and then bring something forth. To the planning board, because I think for us to go through it now. Then for design review, I was trying to scale it down, but I was trying to. You know, I was trying to include everything. But most of this stuff had to do with the downtown, but this electronic message center, Lori, you had a question about it. And. Already right now, it's already prohibited in all these areas. We're just making it, I was trying to make it. Easier to read by adding it to. This section, basic requirements, because it's already stated in the below sections. But you'd have to read through all the whole sign by law to pick out where it's allowed and where it's not allowed. It's only allowed right now in industrial and highway.
My concern is that right now we I know that people don't like the gas stations downtown, but they exist. And they post their their gas prices on those freestanding signs. And so like would this bylaw prohibit them from having a freestanding sign with gas prices on it? So that's.
Right here.
And then also we have the um.
It's stated in the eye that they're not.
That the Lions Club has in the downtown business district. So you know, I know they're having some issues with the sign now, so they may wanna replace that. Within the next year or two. So would they be prohibited from replacing that sign because right now it's saying that you can't have. Any electronic message centers in downtown business.
Bobby, you have something? We're not taking it away from downtown business, they're not allowed in downtown business right now. But in in right here with. I. It the auto filling service stations are not deemed in violation.
Bobby, you have something there?
Yeah, um a couple of years ago, um when one of the gas stations. Um had excess of signs up, um I think it's the one across from the mobile station, um. I called the state and there are a couple of signs that are allowed by right, no matter what zoning says. One of them is the inspection station sign that has a big picture of the inspection sticker. The other one is uh the signs that are on the pumps that give the price of the. Fuel. Okay, I'm not sure if. A separate freestanding sign. It has like a digital readout of the um. Prices is part of that, I'm not sure. But I'd have to do some digging with the state on that. But but there is two types of signs that are allowed no matter what. One is the inspection sign, the other one is the changeable signs on top of the pumps. And if those are digital, I I I think they you've gotta be okay with it.
Right, I think right here it says. Gasoline pump bearing the end, you know, it says they'll not be deemed in violation of this chapter. We had talked about this before. When we talked about the electronic signs, I think Kathy had said. That the gas stations are exempt.
Yeah, that's.
I think that's what he's talking about, that's the little sign on top of the pump.
Yeah.
It's not the freestanding sign where it has the prices. Like company cards. I noticed that today, they have the digital numbers with the prices on their freestanding sign.
That's what I'm not sure of.
I I think this would prohibit that.
Well, we it already is prohibited then because. We don't allow electronic signs downtown. Right now, before this bylaw change. They're only allowed in highway and industrial as of today. If this isn't gonna affect that lion sign, because that's already. I that might be exempt because it's um, what was it, a civic sign?
Well, right now there's language that you're proposing to delete that says and may have an additional sixteen square feet of space for changeable copied message.
That's, I think that's manual um.
Yeah.
Manual um letters.
Hmm. And I only wanted to do that in the downtown because there aren't any there right now. I drove around the downtown and there's no changeable copy signs with letters. So. If we're looking at downtown revitalization. I don't know. If you want changeable copy signs. I've seen a couple, there's a couple in Business East and a couple in Business West. But.
How are we treating sandwich boards?
They're not allowed, but they could be cute down on Blake Street, but I think right now sandwich boards aren't allowed.
They are allowed.
Thing that I added, they are?
Yes, that is considered a movable sign and when you see. Um not a sign that moves, but a movable sign. Um. And I it's limited to fifteen square feet because the typical sandwich board sign is three by five.
So it's a temporary sign.
That's right.
Yep, windows and sandwich boards are temporary. So even there are no window signs allowed today. But our whole town has window signs. But if you really read our bylaws, they're not even allowed, I was adding them into our bylaws this year.
Really, do you have something there or is your your?
No, I'm just thinking, sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, well, why don't you, do you wanna bring this back to design review because it seems like there's a lot of ins and outs.
And that way it could, you know, it's. There's enough time to talk with Bob and Lori and and hammer some of these things out, so then when it came back. To the planning board, we can hammer through a lot of this.
Okay. That sounds great. But I do think that Bill has a good point about maybe breaking it into a smaller chunk.
I know, but you know, I think it's because we're all fighting amongst ourselves and with staff like. We had a sign by law total upgrade in two thousand and fourteen. And we're all in agreement and Kathy brought it forward and no one, it was a huge changes and nobody questioned it. I think the fact that. The way we're doing it. I don't know, and then the way.
Well, I I think like you said, the master plan was something that people wanted to wait for, so we have that now, so but I I I I do agree that I think that that. You can try it. But if it if it all fails, it all fails.
Right, I just think if you had supportive staff in the master plan, it might not fail if we if we condensed it. To what was agreed upon.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe that's an outcome.
Mm-hmm, you know.
Yep. All right, well, thanks for all this work, I know it's a lot to do.
It wasn't time, you know, it took a long time, especially to make the tables.
Oh, yeah.
I was trying to make it easier, but if it's easier to read all the writing, I just took all the writing and put it into tables. But we can, we can leave it as writing, it doesn't matter. Truthfully, you know, I don't like to go up to town meeting and get. Skewered myself.
No. Nope. Um, okay. Nice job. Nobody can go to bed until they've seen the use variance by law. Hold on, oh no, why can't I share? I don't have ability to share.
Am I still sharing? No.
No. Dana, do you know how I can share, is it my problem or is it something with the security settings?
Question, I'm not sure, you are a co-host, you should be able to share.
Are you using a browser or are you using the app?
Um, I think I'm in the app.
Okay, because usually if you're in the browser, you can't share.
Down at the bottom.
All right, that's okay, you don't. I'll send it, I'll email it to everyone, it's it's no real giant thing, basically it's just if we wanna pursue um no use variances. For. One of the last time. But the reason I think, this is why I think it's compelling, because again, like I've said before, if we're truly trying to make changes in our zoning and we always have the use variance. Then we can never really make a solid change and and I've said it to, I've said it before, something that came out of Judy Barrett's classes. She said if you have a use variance in your zoning bylaws, stop and start, get rid of them before you move forward. So the reason I also think, you know, sometimes we bring up those cases, like we talked last time about the um. The the business that wanted to sell alcohol, so we they or whatever it was and they got a use variance, but we're still missing the criteria, the criteria is literally only soil condition, shape. Or topography, it's a unique circumstance that causes sort of hardship based on all three things, soil conditions, shape or topography, so we're not even granting them legally, we have a. There's a lawsuit now on one of our properties um based on this exact issue that we're granting use variances based on. You know, well, I think the one in this particular case in court now was because it was on groundwater. I mean, that that's not even the criteria, so I feel like we're not even granting them properly and it's also prohibiting what we actually want and if. The voters want a certain use or don't want a certain use, they should have the ability to vote, not have it down to. Five people. So that's my rationale, I'll send you guys, I know it's getting super late, I'll send you the. Copy of the bylaw if you wanna look at it and we can talk next time, any initial thoughts? Am I crazy to keep trying?
No, I like it. No crazier than the sign lady.
My god. Okay, anything else to bring forward?
The only thing I'm gonna offer for the for the use variances, and you guys can do what you want, it doesn't matter to me. But just as you know, understanding what you're trying to do. If you pass the no use variance um restriction. And a unique opportunity does come up. You've just shot yourself in the foot, so I I. Understanding what you said, you know, for what you are trying to control and what you're trying, your goals are, you know, the 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 I'm. Almost guaranteed there will be an opportunity at some point in the future where somebody wants to do something and they won't be able to do it.
I know, but the criteria has to be then, oh, you know, it looks like you're sharing again.
I am.
The criteria has to be related to those three things legally.
Understood.
Never do that.
Understood.
I know, all right.
Neither neither do most of the ZBAs in the state.
I know. All right, so I'll move on, um Amy, you have another one here?
Yeah, I have the warehouse bylaws, um the definitions, this is what Hudson did. And we have so many warehouses in town, but we also have, you can do warehouses in Business South. You can do cold. Warehouses, I think, still in Business West, like there are so many different type of warehouses. And towns now are starting to do it by the code that you see. What did we say with those traffic studies?
Mm-hmm. I do see.
And I think I sent these out to everybody, but I can again, like I really feel like. We need definitions for warehouses.
That's fine.
I can send these to the traffic and safety if they wanna read them over, I just thought. Hudson did a great job and um I can share them with you guys. And we could talk about it next time. But I think there's a standard warehouse, so that will cover other things and. I don't know, I think we're like the warehouse capital of the world, we should have at least the proper definitions and if they change use. You know, they're grandfathered for what they're doing. But then if they change to a totally different use, then they could fall under these new definitions.
Okay, so let's look at that for next time, um everyone has a copy of this name?
Uh I'll send it out again.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, anything else for bylaws, I wanna see if we can quickly approve the minutes, there's no other business, no um A and Rs or anything like that?
Okay, so quick bylaw. One more quick and I I just wanna run it by Bob and Lori while Bob's here. Um Lori and I had talked before, there's something about a timeline for construction. And um we had mentioned before that. Um if there isn't a timeline for construction. And a property never finishes construction. Then I was told then you can't. Enforce anything because they've never really finished. So she said if you want to be able to enforce site plans. You need a timeline for construction, I didn't know if that's something for a bylaw.
Um in the building code, it used to say or it says. Um moving along as expediently as possible, that is a big fat gray area that nobody wants to get into. And I don't think a court has ever decided it, I think the best route is to. Um one one of the situations that you run into is that if a project is not finished. Um the developer may not have the money to finish it.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the best way to do it, if you want to have some sort of a sunset date on a. So I think the best way to do it, if you want to have some sort of a sunset date on a project, is have some sort of performance bond. I mean, obviously, you know, send it to legal to make sure they're okay with it, but you need to put some teeth into it somewhere because I really don't have it in the building code. Um, and if you wanna put it in the zoning code, you know, um. You, you're gonna have to have some sort of teeth, like put up a performance bond for percentage of the project in case it's not finished. Um, you know, which will drive more businesses away, I'm sure. But.
Permit, right? Occupancy permits.
Well, if they can't finish the building, I can't give them an occupancy permit.
Right.
You know, like I, like I said with um eighty-nine West Main. You know, the, I'm authorized to give them a partial occupancy. But I said I will not give them a building permit until they finish the site plan work that is in violation of the approved plans. And the last time they spoke to me, they were gonna hire a new engineer to try to get those things right. Because there are people that have come to me who were interested in, you know, potentially leasing that space. And I told them outright, I said, you know, your um potential landlord. Has issues with um the approved site plans and they're not right, and I won't give him a permit. You know, and, and I've probably have, well. If their site plan was correct according to the plans, we would have that whole first floor occupied now. But I'm holding developers' feet to the fire.
Lori, you have something?
Uh, the challenge with the performance bond, uh, unlike for subdivisions. Is that the town doesn't have the right to take the performance bond. And then hire a vendor to complete the outstanding work. Because that would be considered trespassing on private property. And we don't have that ability. So if we do require a performance bond, so I have done that. In exchange for occupancy permit, if there's some little Mickey Mouse issues that are remaining. Uh, so what I would do in circumstances like that is I would say, fine, I'm okay with the issuance of a. Of a temporary occupancy permit, however. Um, you still have your landscaping left to do, you have to, you know, hydro seed and I need growth and, you know, I need trees. And it's the middle of winter, so I want you to give me ten thousand dollars cash as a performance guarantee. So. Uh, what that does is maybe the value of the work is actually only five thousand dollars. Um, and so they don't want to lose ten thousand dollars for a job that's only gonna cost them five thousand dollars. So they have an incentive to complete the job. Um, but I only do that for little, little Mickey Mouse issues, not for a large scale issues. Like they've only completed fifty percent of the site work. Um. That's problematic. And then the other thing about, you know, I, I think it's uh better to have a um. Timeline that's specific to the particular project scope. So you may have a tiny project like a Dunkin' Donuts, or you may have Northborough Crossing. So obviously, it's gonna be much faster to build out Dunkin' Donuts than it is to build out Northborough Crossing. So I, I think it would be better to have something like that, that's project specific. Specify it in the decision as a condition of approval versus in a bylaw, which is gonna apply to everything.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna move on to the minutes then. Is there, um, we have an amendment to the minutes for eight one. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes for eight one? I was absent, so I'll be abstaining, but in any case, is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended for August first?
So moved.
Second.
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 All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie abstains. Okay, let's see, next we have the minutes from September fifth. Um, I was not at that meeting, so I will be abstaining. There were no amendments that I saw come through. Are there any amendments tonight to the minutes? Okay, is there a motion to accept the minutes from September fifth as submitted?
Second, oh.
Still moved? Second. All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. And the minutes from September nineteenth. Uh, there, I have no amendments submitted. Any amendments tonight?
No.
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 Is there a motion to accept the minutes from the September nineteenth meeting as submitted? Still moved? Second.
Second.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. It looks like um we have a busy meeting coming up for December, so we have that. Um, Lori, anything exciting coming up on the ZBA? Anything new on the twenty-first?
Uh, no, on the twenty-first, I, I do anticipate receiving an email from um Motel Six. Withdrawing their application, so they've decided to uh replace their septic system. Um, and uh, so that's good news. And then the only other issue is a decision will be rendered on one twenty-nine Maple Street. So that's the um five-unit um multifamily that was destroyed by fire.
Great. Okay, then if there is no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Really?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.